Welcome to your Guam Congress Building. Today's public hearing is conducted by the Committee on Finance and Government Operations. It's called to order at 8:32 on April 24, 2025. First notice of this public hearing was disseminated to all senators and media outlets on April 17, 2025, with its second notice disseminated on April 21, 2025. Hearing notices were also made available on the Guam Legislature's website, our legislative calendar, and the government of Guam's public notice portal. This morning, the committee will hear testimony on bill number 5938, introduced by myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, an act to add a new 26110.2 to Chapter 26, Division 2 of Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to requiring the itemization of business privilege tax on all sales tax receipts, invoices, and other documentation provided to customers and to the established penalties for noncompliance to be known as the Business Privilege Transparency Act of 2025. Committee will also hear the following bills this morning. Bill number 9038, COR by Vincent A. V. Borja, an act to amend 26203.2 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to permanently increasing the gross threshold for limited exemptions on the business privileged taxes for certain small businesses. Bill number 71-38, COR, introduced by William A. Parkinson, an act to indefinitely suspend the business privileged tax on baby products, feminine hygiene products, food, incontinence products, medical devices, and medicine, and to cite this act as Guam Crisis Readiness and Economic Relief Act of 2025. We also hear bill number 101-38, COR, by Jesse A. Luhon, an act to add a new 26203F to Article 2, Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code annotated relative to expanding the business privileged tax exemptions list to include prescription drugs. At this time, I would like to welcome my colleagues who are joining me this morning. Of course, I have the vice speaker, the vice chair of this committee. Thank you for joining us, Senator Ada. We also have Senator Guma Tautau. We have Senator Borja, Senator Shelley Calvo, Senator Luhon, and also Senator Turlahee. And so today, of course, we're going to have our guests come forward from Rev. Tax and others to join us soon. But before I'd like to begin to remind everyone in attendance of E. Legis. Tura Guahan's general rules of conduct. Individuals testifying shall first be recognized by the chairperson before speaking and shall state their full name for record-keeping purposes. Questions and testimony shall be confined to the substance and nature of the bill or the agenda. Personal inferences as to the character or motive of any senator or individual testifying are not permitted. The chairperson of the committee may order the removal of any member of E. Legis. Tura Guahan or the public in attendance who fails to observe proper decorum pursuant to the 38 Guam Legislature's standing rules. Any violation of the general rule of conduct will result in immediate removal from this public hearing room. With that, we will now proceed to hear testimony on bill 5938, COR. As I am the Rev. Tax representative, you can come forward while I introduce the bill. As I am the prime sponsor of the bill, I think the best way to actually open my testimony is to read this very simple yet comprehensive bill. That may prove to not be simple based on the testimony of our guest today, but I'll give it a shot. Bill number 59-38, COR, introduced by Christopher M. Duñez, Frank F. Blas Jr., V. Anthony Ada, Jesse A. Luhon, Vincent A. V. Borja, Sean Guma Tautau, Joe S. Nagusti, Sabrina Salas Montanani. I have already read the title, so I'm going to just read the body of what the bill is all about and how it's written. Being enacted by the people of Guam. Section 1, Legislative Findings and Intent. E. Legis. Tura Guahan finds that the Business Privilege Tax, BPT, is a significant source of revenue for the government of Guam, but is largely invisible to consumers at the point of sale. This lack of transparency makes it difficult for consumers to understand the full tax burden included in their purchases and creates confusion about pricing. E. Legis. Tura Guahan further finds that transparency and taxation is fundamental to good governance and informed consumer decision-making. When consumers can clearly see the taxes they pay, they are better equipped to understand both the true cost of their purchases and their contribution to government operations. The business community through organizations such as the Guam Chamber of Commerce has consistently advocated for greater transparency in tax collection and reporting. As a matter of fact, they advocate for a sales tax. Research into other jurisdictions demonstrates the benefits and feasibility of tax transparency requirements. Hawaii's general excise tax disclosure requirement has been successfully implemented, providing consumers with clear information about tax charges on their purchases. Similarly, New Mexico's grocery receipt tax disclosure requirements have enhanced consumer awareness without creating undue burden on businesses. Washington State's requirement to separately state business and occupation tax charges has proven beneficial for both consumers and businesses, while the Commonwealth of the Northern Marianas Islands, our sisters and brothers up north, have successfully implemented a value-added tax disclosure requirements. E. Legis. Tura also intends to enhance transparency in Guam's tax system by requiring businesses to clearly display the business privilege tax on all sales receipts and invoices. This requirement will help businesses better communicate tax costs to the customers while improving public understanding of Guam's tax structure. This six-month implementation period, following the promulgation of the rules and regulations, will provide businesses with adequate time to update their point-of-sale systems and train their staff on the new requirements. Section 2, a new 26110.2 is hereby added to Chapter 26, Division 2 of Title 11, Guam Code annotated, to read Business Privilege Tax Transparency Act of 2025. Every person required to pay business privilege tax under this chapter shall separately state and display the amount of business privilege tax applicable to the sale of any receipt, invoice, or other document provided to the customer at the time of sale. B. The tax amount shall be clearly identified as business privilege tax or BPT and displayed as a separate line item. C. For purposes of calculating the displayed tax amount, the person shall multiply the total sale amount by the applicable business privilege tax rate. D. Failure to comply with this section shall result in a penalty of $500 for each violation not to exceed $10,000 per calendar year. E. The Department of Revenue and Taxation shall promulgate rules and regulations to implement this section within 90 days of this bill's enactment into law, should it be enacted. This section shall take effect six months after the completion of the retirements set forth in subsection E. And it's got an effective date and a severability clause. So ladies and gentlemen, and those who are watching, I'm sure, on our channels and media partners, at best, if this bill became law next month, we'd be looking at 90 days to promulgate rules and regulations. We would be looking at a six months of implementation, which should, in general, ensure that there's plenty of time to get used to this new system, should it become law. You know, my observations are this. Simply put, BPT is unclear. GRT is unclear. I've talked to so many business owners over the last few weeks about this bill, and I can't get a clear answer on whether businesses absorb cost as a cost of doing business when they charge for a service or a good or an item and factor it in somehow or some way, or businesses like Subway Incorporated and many other contractors that I've talked to, which have shown me their invoices, and if you go to lunch to have a healthy lunch today at Subway, most of it's healthy, you will see a visible tax estimate that is on their receipt. Many businesses are already doing this. I would imagine that companies like Subway and others who are adding this fee are adding it to show the customer that this is the government's share and what you're going to be paying to the government, and whatever else is prior to that is what you're remitting to our business for the privilege of consuming our goods, buying our service, or buying products. This simple ambiguity by itself, to me, jumps out as the reason to do this. The next thing is, is the chamber and others have advocated for many years now for a sales tax, the Guam Chamber of Commerce, and many businesses on Guam want a sales tax, to be clear and to make it clear. The issue is, and I'm sure as part of the fiscal team, our director for Rev. Tax, and all of the other fiscal team members that I've talked to in the number of years that this has been discussed, is bondholders could immediately call millions of dollars in bonds that we currently have out because we simply shifted from a known business privilege tax, GRT, which is pledged for these bonds, to a new system. And if they feel confusion, and if they feel lack of records and the ability to demonstrate performance, hundreds of millions of dollars could be called immediately, crippling our government. We know that we do not have the financing capability outside of the bonds that we've taken, and we certainly know we don't have the cash in the bank to pay those bonds off. The other issue I would like to talk about is, you know, right now, and I'm not calling businesses dishonorable, but what we have in Guam is an honor system. Businesses are filing their BPT, filing their business privilege tax, their grocery receipts tax, based on an honor system. I'm sure most of these businesses have a point-of-sale system. I'm sure most of them, you know, are upstanding, but the fact is, is, is an honor system. In fact, the public auditor has been crying out loud now about different taxes such as sin taxes and other things that he believes are being woefully undercollected, probably for the same type of reasons, not having an adequate tracking system for products coming into Guam that are coming into wholesalers and retailers and eventually going out and purchased by the public. Transparency is key to this issue, and right now, I don't think anybody can say that our current system is transparent in any meaningful way. Last thing I'd like to say is, and you've mentioned this before, and I'm not sure that this will be your testimony today, Marie, or your predecessor or the like, we're going to hear other bills, of course, to eliminate or exempt the BPT on other products. Senator Luhon and I, last term, when we introduced the bill for prescription drugs and medical devices to be exempt from BPT and do not have to pay that BPT to help our people who are, you know, need these products to use or drugs for their, you know, to heal ailments and deal with their conditions, it was mentioned to us that it's difficult right now to do this in terms of breakout system of our tax structure, that it's kind of like a conglomeration of you got to pay BPT, you pay BPT, and there's a list, a form, a filing system, whatever, whatever have you, that exists for that, yet if you're going to go in and start exempting line items of taxes, it would be better if you had a transparent system of BPT to know what's exempted straight away by that product, service, or whatever else is being called for. So if that's the same way today, then it means the rest of the bills and several bills that are being introduced down the line to do similar things to this, and Medicaid bills coming up soon for exemption on BPT services, as well as, you know, businesses will possibly fall into the same issue and not being able to exempt them because we don't have a clear system in place. I hope that fate doesn't befall us. But for those reasons, I'd like to see if we can move forward on this and see what we can do. I think that the time for promulgation of rules and regulations, I think that the issue of the six-month implementation, and I think that if our brothers and sisters up north in the CNMI can easily manage a value-added tax system which is similar to an excise tax, really behooves us that I'm sure we got the time, talent, and individual capabilities on Guam to pull that off. So with that, I'm now going to accept testimony on this legislation, and signed up that I can see for this bill right now is Marie Lizama, the Director of Department of Revenue and Taxation. And Marie, I noticed you have an assistant with you. Will the gentleman be testifying as well?
He is here merely to answer any questions, specific questions with regard to the legislation.
Great. So please proceed. Identify yourself, where you're coming from, I think we all know, but for record-keeping purposes, for committee reports, please do that, and then proceed with your testimony, Ms. Marie.
Absolutely. Good morning, Mr. Chair. Good morning, Senators Guma Tautau, Salas Montanani, Borja, Calvo, Luhon, Vice Speaker Ada, Senator Turlahee, and Senator Taidugui. My name is Marie Lizama. I am the Director of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, here to give testimony on bill 5938 and some others that are scheduled for today. And before I actually go into that, I'd just like to preface my comments with typically, or our agency has typically taken a stance wherein we provide information, basically, or just pretty much the facts. We, we don't typically provide, you know, opinions for or against proposed legislation. We simply feel that it's best to give the facts, and then, you know, of course, you as, as the governing body or the legislative body will simply take that into consideration and then move forward either way. So of course, as you mentioned, Mr. Chair, the, this particular bill requires the itemization of BPT privilege tax on all sales receipts, invoices, and other documentation provided to customers. It also seeks to establish penalties for noncompliance of the requirement. And I guess, I guess for us, what we would be most concerned with is, is that secondary part of it, which would be the noncompliance. Should this bill pass into law, it should be noted that it will add further strain on an already critically understaffed BPT branch. Its employee turnover rate has historically been and continues to be high. Recruitment and retention challenges are similar to what other employers locally and nationwide are experiencing. As such, there are only two dedicated full-time staff who, along with temporary help from other branch staff, handle current workloads. In order to comply with any mandate, additional staff will be need, will need to be brought on board and dedicated solely to the monitoring for compliance and/or the reconciliation of data. This includes, but is not limited to, adjustments to account for exemptions, thereby rendering the data printed on the receipt somewhat possibly inaccurate. The fiscal impact will expand beyond retailers' efforts to obtain point-of-sale systems or reprogram current ones. And so, you know, our testimony today is short. It really is, you know, just to highlight that we are critically understaffed in that particular branch. Thank you.
So before I go to my colleagues, I really appreciate your approach with regard to policy. Certainly with policy that is really between the legislature and the executive branch to, first of all, enact, and then, if it's enacted, to carry out on the executive level. I can tell you that if really it comes down to manpower requirements and enforcement, I think that this, this government should always, in every branch, in everything that you do, as critical as you are to the operations of our government, address those issues independently from policy. If that's the issue that exists, then this legislature, along with the governor, should ensure that you have every resource you need to carry out every single division within your operation area. And I think you've been doing the best that you can do with what you've got. I understand that all of your divisions right now are chronically understaffed. That will be left for another time, perhaps the budget, and we'll sit down and discuss that. But going forward, I appreciate that your position in general is that the issue fundamentally is enforcement as well as compliance and as well as executing the nature of this transition. So I really appreciate that. One thing that I learned, and I don't know whether it would be contained in this legislation, you know, if it goes forward, is one of the testimonies from now, one of the controllers over at DOA with regard to the implementation of the FMIIS system is that normally on transitions of this nature, usually what you have is some sort of technical advice as well as an advance team to be able to go through everything and scrub everything in terms of experiences from other jurisdictions, professional and technical assistance, so that when you enter into it, basically, you don't go in blindly, and that also you have that support team to carry it through until you're comfortable with full implementation. So perhaps if we move forward with this during the rules and regulations, we can vet all of those things out. So thank you for bringing the concerns to the forefront. I will now go to the vice chair of my committee and the vice speaker for any questions or comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't have a question right now. Go ahead and yield to the, our other colleagues and perhaps towards the end. I'll go ahead and.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. At this time, we'll go in order of arrival of our committee members and others. Mr. Guma Tautau, Senator, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you, Marie, and the Department of Revenue and Taxation for all the work that you do. From August of 2012 to November, I got to see firsthand the work of that BPT team. And yes, it's challenging, and if they're listening, kudos to them this morning, and I think that we will need to provide that support. It's a generation removed from this issue to come to this branch once again, and I think, and, and I'm, I'm supporting it, and it's, it's time again, once that we need to, to take care of this issue. I only have a couple of questions, and, Mr. Chair, if you'll allow me. Marie and Rev. Tax, with respect to the issuance of receipts, invoices, or other documents that are provided to customers at the time of sale, what data is available at this point regarding the ability of Rev. Tax to verify whether businesses are properly recording BPT assessments versus the actual BPT payments that they remit to the agency? And along these lines, how many businesses does DOT estimate are still using cash as their preferred payment method?
Okay, I'll take that, a little bit of that, I'll answer a little bit of that, and if Jerome needs to chime in, then we'll go ahead and do that. You know, BPT reporting, as the Chair, Mr. Chair mentioned earlier, you know, it's, it's on an honor system, right? Basically, it's, it's self-reporting, and it's not unlike income tax. So when any of you file your income tax returns, we trust that you are reporting what is accurate, you know, and, and honest representation, you know, of the situation. So we've pretty much, we pretty much apply that same concept to BPT. And short of, I mean, I, I don't know how, our team is probably at a loss as to how to police that. You know, I mean, you know, the, the cash part, I don't even know if we track, if we track that, we can probably try to pull some numbers for you with regard to cash payments. But right now, how this, this happens is each taxpayer files online, that is by law. So you file by, you file online, and then payment is remitted the following month. So, you know, there, it's, it's really just that, you know, process, that's how it is. So for us to kind of, I guess, go to each business and kind of try to maybe get into there and, you know, take a look at, at their records and so forth, I think it's, it's probably not realistic, and especially given the current staff that we have, you know, right now. I don't know if Jerome would be able to add to any of that. Yeah. So, so what we can do, Senator, we'll go back and we, we can pull the data on the actual cash part of it, but, you know, again, with regard to the businesses, we pretty much use the same process as you do, you know, when you file your income tax return.
Right, and I can attest that that digital system actually is pretty effective, and so, again, having it come online was helpful, not just to what would be my past small business, but others. And I think for the committee, and this, Mr. Chairman, at least for the, in the report, hopefully that we can just, just get clarification on that, and we can just add even that note as part of the measure. I only have one other question, Mr. Chair, and recognizing that the bill establishes a $500 penalty for each instance of noncompliance to what essentially is a visible BPT requirement, what administrative rules and regulations, maybe corresponding personnel, resources, at this point, Marie, do you think should be considered in the legislative process to help ensure that the effective enforcement of this particular proposal moving forward?
That's probably a discussion that I have to take with the team that actually does, you know, will be able to do the monitoring of that, so, yeah.
Well, thank you, Marie, and thank you for your candor this morning, and again, thank you and your team for all that you do. That's all I have, Mr. Chair. Thank you so much.
Okay.
Thank you, Senator Guma Tautau. Senator Luhon, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Chair, no questions this time, Mr. Chair. This, I, I just thank you again for the introduction of this, of this bill. Okay, the, the bill that you announced earlier, basically 101-38, again, it's a rehash for, from last legislature, and as you had mentioned earlier, that at the time, it wasn't an opposition, but the, the tracking was a difficult situation to, to do, and that as a result of that hearing from last legislature, Mr. Chair, you came up, of course, to make it a lot easier, because as you had mentioned, there are quite a few bills that will exempt products, food and medicine and things of that nature, baby products, and that it'd be easier to track at the point of sale. And so bill 59-38 was, was born. So I want to thank you for, for that, and then I'll wait for more comments that may be received and have some questions maybe then. But thank you, Monsieur.
Thank you, Senator Luhon. Senator Borja, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you to DOT for coming down. I, I don't have any questions at this time. You know, I think, you know, I, I share, I'm, I share the same sentiments with, with the previous speakers and Senator Guma Tautau, and really thank you and really your approach to how you, you know, came today to, to, to share your, your, you know, your testimony in regards to the many proposals in, in how the, we're going to change, you know, possibly changes the way we collect tax or how we, or even changing the tax structure. So thank you for coming today. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Borja. Senator Turlahee, you're recognized at this time.
Sujosmasi, Mr. Chair, and thank you again, Director, for your testimony today. As you, we said, so this was tried before and then repealed a couple of years later because it was being implemented differently in different businesses. Some advertised their prices, put their prices in the racks, and then when the customer comes up, they, they said they're going to add on to that price, and that was the subject of a lawsuit in the Macy's case. And, and what happened was, it was not evident that they were just showing where other businesses did it differently, and they would say, of, of your bill, this much percent. did it differently, and they would say, of your bill, this much percentage will be sent to Revan Tax for taxes. So there was, you know, disagreement because of that being implemented differently by others, and it looked like instead of showing the tax that businesses have to pay, it was actually adding a tax to consumers in some cases. And, and then it seemed like there was also some impact to tourists because they were, you know, understanding Guam is a duty-free destination, and yet at the end, it looked to them more like a sales tax. But I think in your testimony, you pointed out my, my big concern is that you said it, the adjustments to account for exemptions, right now, we exempt $500,000 of every business, there are many businesses, I think 85% to 90% of businesses are exempt because of this amount, or up to this amount. But how would we show that on individual transactions? We'll be showing to everybody that they're helping to pay a 4% B P T when really that business is exempt.
Yeah. So, so absolutely, that, that would be part of the, you know, discussion that, or it would have to be included in a discussion with the team. You know, we, I guess, in, in hearing or in, when we first were advised of this bill, it was really, we have no issues with transparency. Our concern is likely tied, it's more tied to, you know, if, is that, are people going to take that amount and correlate it to, you know, the payment that will be coming? Because our concern is, there will be adjustments, there are exemptions, what if things are, you know, I mean, there are, there are many other factors that will eventually impact what was initially printed. So that is something that we will have to consider, and, you know, I, I'm simply pointing out that right now, we don't have the manpower for that. With regard to your earlier statement about businesses and, and how some of them, you know, likely took, or they were, you know, one of them was sued, I can assure you that the staff is pretty aware, whenever there is a receipt and it shows something like that, our staff immediately, you know, they bring it to the attention of the taxpayer services administrator, in this case, is Jerome. And we do know of one, which was mentioned, Subway, they're, they are doing it correctly, you know, and, and we just, you know, just continue to keep an eye out for anything like that, but.
Right. It seems a little bit very, I mean, when we, the, the fiscal note talked about impact to customer, I mean, businesses, they have to change their point-of-sale system, they have to show this on every receipt, so that's one cost for them. But to me, not just showing, you know, 4% of either the total or in the other cases where they were adding 4% to the total, or they'd have to show to, that they are exempt from this tax as well, and it's very hard to do that on a, a point-by-point, they do it at the end of the month.
So the burden will be on them. The burden will be on them, and then we may run into a reconciliation issue at our side.
Right, it seems like, yeah. I, I like the idea, of course, because I think, what I maybe, I'm, I'm guessing, but I think one of the original intents when it was passed before was to show consumers that while, you know, we blame the B P T for the cost of the prices of their goods, it's really two cents at that time, right, that was going to be on every dollar, right? And that I think they just wanted to show that, that that's what's being paid, and the bulk of your bill is really just the prices that have been set by the retailers. So if this, and this bill is not going to help us reduce their prices, and I'm afraid of the part where businesses implemented it to increase their prices. So I appreciate your willingness to make additional suggestions and, and in the rules and regs, it just seems very complicated to me for the businessperson's standpoint as to be showing that if they are exempt companies especially. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Turlahi. Sisus Massey. Senator Koval, you are now recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I don't really have any question at the moment, I just want to thank you guys for being here.
Thank you, Senator Koval. Senator Talatigui, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and good morning to my colleagues. Half a day, Marie, thank you so much for being here, Mrs. Lusama, and of course, to your deputy that's here, appreciate your time. And, and you're, you know, it's obvious it's going to cost Revan Tax additional money. I was just wondering, how much do you think this is going to cost Revan Tax in order to implement this and make sure that it's in place?
Well, first of all, I think the, the bulk of the burden will go onto the retailers. For, on our side, it's really the additional staff, the costs which we would, we would bear, of course, there may be perhaps programming to be done, you know, and in addition to perhaps related forms, you know, and so forth, and, and I apologize, I don't have a dollar amount for you today.
So how many staff do you think you'll need?
If, I mean, I would venture to guess that at least dedicated, two additional dedicated staff, but remember that the branch is already understaffed, so we need to take care of the other things that are currently mandated and, or, you know, that we are responsible for. And so if we could even get more than that, that, that would be great, I'm sure Jerome, you know, would be, would be happy, but it's staffing, really.
You said the bulk will cost, of this cost will go on to the retailer. Is that what you said?
That would be my, my guess, really, because some of your mom-and-pop stores won't, you know, they likely have the older registers or, and so forth, and I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I would venture to guess that, you know, it's, it's the ones that have to either obtain a point-of-sale that is able to parcel that out or reflect that, or perhaps just a reprogramming on their side.
Which would you prefer to get these staff in place before starting promulgating the rules and regulations? Would you like to put those in, those staff in place first before doing that?
I would.
Yeah, it makes sense, right? Because they're gonna be doing the bulk.
Yeah.
So you need that money upfront.
Yes, yes, you know, and, and I, I should just add that, you know, this is the branch that typically, you know, of course, there are, there's legislation that affects this branch. So the staff that's there, a lot of times, you know, they, they've become familiar with a certain law, and then they'd have to pivot, you know, in the event of any amendments to the law, or maybe new, new laws, you know, and so forth, so it is really challenging for the staff that's there.
Do you think six months is enough time in order to comply with the requirements of this legislation?
I think Jerome would have a better.
Jerome? Would you like to chime in? Please state your title, too, for the record and.
Good morning, Senators. My name is Jerome Uggan, and I am the Administrator for the Taxpayer Services Division at Department of Revenue and Taxation. B P T, or Gross Receipts Tax Branch, is actually a part of that division. Going back to, can you repeat what was that last question you were asking?
There's still.
Oh, the six months, right?
Yeah, the six months, is that enough time?
Well, my understanding is the six-month implementation would be for the whole of it, right? So I think the bigger, I mean, definitely us at Revan Tax, but on the businesses themselves, I think that is what the, the challenge might be, because, I mean, we have to do it, and we'll have the rules and regs in place, or should have the rules and regs in place within 90 days of the potential passage, so. So it, just to be, I don't know that the, I think the six months, I mean, that's a decent amount of time, but, and we would definitely all be working on whatever it is that is decided the mandate, right? But like Senator Turlahi was saying earlier, it's very complicated, you know, just as she said, there's exemptions to consider, there's partial exemptions to consider, the accuracy and the penalty part of it, you know, it, the sale that's taking place during, you know, that month, the tax on whatever they make, although it is a percentage, the exemptions and other bills, you know, can affect how much is gonna be paid, you know, the following. So if it's an estimated, you know, amount that needs to be shown, then that might, it's just very complicated, so I think we would just have to get, like the director said, get with the whole team and figure out how, you know, and the enforcement part of it is, both the enforcement and the regulation, you know, following it, monitoring it, the penalty side of it, that's not, it's, it's something new, and it's not something that the B P T branch actually deals with right now. So aside from additional people there, there may be regulatory division employees that are needed to, you know, to go regulatory division, like maybe Business License Branch or the Compliance Branch is normally who does some of those, and then as far as tax enforcement, also, that's a different division that handles, you know, so it, it, it would be for, we definitely do need additional staff, and I don't know how long, you know, it'll take to get into the compliance, like you said, but it's, it's, there's a lot more than just the B P T branch personnel to consider, you know, just, and that's our, you know, the Department of Revenue and Taxation's thing, but there's the Enforcement Division, the Regulatory Division that comes into play, so this would just add also to the responsibilities of different divisions other than, so.
Thank you, Jerome. In fact, that's what I was gonna, my next question was, you know, how is D O T going to, you know, follow these requirements on an enforcement level, you know, and so I think the two individuals is at, is in-house, but you're still gonna need that enforcement. So I think it's gonna be more than two staff that you're gonna need to, to make sure that this follows through, because I'm, you know, I'm a person that's been advocating for transparency from day one, I think it's so important. So Marie and Jerome, so the two that are in-house, how many more will you need for enforcement, in, in staffing, that is?
I, you know, I, again, we'll take however many we can. Like, as I mentioned earlier, recruitment and retention are real challenges for us, and, you know, it's, it's not unlike elsewhere. So, you know, with us in particular, especially, you know, whether it's the examination area or even compliance, we have additional duties that we oversee. So, you know, for example, Jerome mentioned compliance. Compliance also is in charge of the cannabis industry, so it's the cannabis industry, it's, you know, it's B and Bs, it's short-term vacation rentals, it's, you know, operations, it's going out, making, finding out if businesses even have valid licenses. But, you know, back to your question about the timeframe, I've always been a proponent of educational awareness. I think that's part of the solution. And I think that, you know, we do a campaign with regard to what these, what is required of the retailers, you know, and, and so forth, I think, I think you've got part of that solved. You know, it's just, and it's a matter of hitting it and hammering it home so that they are aware that, hey, this is, this is the law, you know, should it pass into law, this is the law, and this is what you need to comply with, so.
Actually, that was my last question with regards to that, how is D O T going to support these businesses in this transition? And you hit it on the head, you know, it's about educating, you know, our public first, letting them know, and that, and that's very critical, I think. It avoids a lot of those, you know, hundreds of phone calls you get a day at D O T trying to understand something when it's as simple as putting an education campaign together. You know, I, you know, I appreciate when I go to the restaurants, right? Sometimes I appreciate, depends on the server that I get at that restaurant, if they're doing a good job, that, you know, it's an automatic service charge that's placed on, on my receipt when I go eat, and, you know, we, it's like we have no say. You know, one day, if it gets really bad, one of my servers are really bad, I'm gonna ask the management, hey, I want this off my receipt because this server was not a very good server at all, you know, and have that option. And there's nothing in the law, right? I mean, every restaurant can do that, it's similar to what we're doing here, putting, you know, some kind of cost on here to show the people transparency, that you're automatically tipping somebody at a restaurant regardless of, you know, on their service. So when Revan Tax implements something like this, there is no choice, but just out of curiosity, is there a choice for someone to deny the service charge at a restaurant if they're not happy with the server?
I, I don't think we're aware, we, we understand that, or actually, we know if, if you can refuse. I have heard stories of people refusing.
Yeah.
And, you know, you do sometimes hear the, the restaurant management say, well, the surcharge is not actually tied to a gratuity, so.
Yeah, it depends. It all depends. It seems like some businesses are, are making it up as they go, you know, whether you call it a surcharge or a gratuity, you know, or tip, they even put the word tip in there, it all depends.
Right.
But, and again, I appreciate the opportunity for you to be here to, to give us more insight. I mean, you're the experts, you know what you're dealing with every single day, it's nice for us to put legislation out that would, we think that would help, but if we do, we also want to be able to implement this and make sure it goes through and, and done right. So I think it's more than just two staff, you're gonna need more on the enforcement side to, to enforce this, but most importantly, I think the education campaign is very important to school what the changes would be or how to do it. And, and of course, Revan Tax to be there for that transition for our businesses, because it's the people that we serve, you serve and I serve, so thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Turlahi. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First off, just wanna give a shout-out to all those working-class servers out there. Never gonna try to take my 4% service charge back from you. I know how hard you people work. Some of you work in two, three jobs just to make things happen. If you're tired, if you're not on your best, I understand. You deserve all of it, and I'm always gonna make sure that you get what's worth and what's coming to you. And so regarding this bill, I'd like to echo the, some of the thoughts of my colleague, Senator Turlahi, because she is absolutely right. I remember when that change happened, I was in high school, and I remember going to the mall one day and seeing, whoa, you know, buying my shirt for prom, and there's this, there's this new tax on my receipt, and that had a, kind of blown me away, even as a kid, that I didn't think we had a sales tax. And so I see this as very, very ripe for abuse in terms of, there's a new tax one day, and people don't know how to question it, don't know how to talk about it. We have a compliance branch that's too small to solve a problem that we're creating out of thin air. Like, we do not have this problem right now in any meaningful capacity as a widespread problem. Maybe we have some actors every now and then, but if we make this change, it will make it significantly worse. There will, there will be people that do it through negligence, but there will also be people who do it through malice intentionally. What do we do about that? Why are we setting ourselves up for a new problem that we don't have, and for what? This doesn't lower prices, this is just the first step in trying to force-feed us a sales tax down the road. We put the compliance. We put the compliance in, we force people to put this in, even though we have all sorts of BPT exemptions that are now going to be tracked on the receipt, taxed on like a sales tax potentially. And so, no, I'm going to have to echo the thoughts of my colleague Senator Turlae. And I think this is kind of a, why? Why? And I think the why of it is this is the infrastructure for a sales tax down the road. And I am against a sales tax, full stop. We have gone decades, our entire island life without a sales tax. But now we need it. We're now, we're going to try and grow the size of government and grow the size of government that polices our small businesses while we're in the middle of a global trade war, while tariffs are going all over the place. I don't think that sends the right message to the community that in these times of austerity, we're going to be growing the government to police small businesses on a problem that we created by enforcing and compelling an extra line on the receipt. And there is also a psychological element to this. This is normalizing seeing that extra tax on our receipt. Now, we do it for BPT. We see it for years that we have this little line item on our receipt. But then eventually, one day, maybe not this, definitely not this legislature, but maybe in the future legislature when people like myself and Senator Turlae aren't here to hold the line on the sales tax, they might get one through. And that BPT on the receipt that has been normalized for several years, now the burden has shifted. Now it's on the consumers. Now, this, this receipt, this tax goes on to the people and they feel it and they don't understand it. And so what was once a tool for transparency is something that sneaks in a sales tax in the most untransparent way. So I cannot support this legislation. I see no necessity, I see no need for it. I see no benefit for it. All I could see is potential for abuse and is a backdoor avenue to a sales tax that none of us want. So I apologize, Mr. Chair, but I cannot support this bill. With that, I yield the rest of my time. Thank you.
No apology needed, Senator Parkinson. I do take issue with some of your comments, but I'll do that in my closing now. First of all, I don't view this as rocket science. You know, I've enumerated in the bill many other jurisdictions that have no problem implementing this. As a matter of fact, I have to say, I think what's ripe for abuse is self-reporting. I take everybody at their word. I take them at, you know, their level of honesty and integrity. But there's a reason why jurisdictions, in fact, interestingly enough, will hear a bill by my good friend and good colleague who's wanting to exempt taxes. I don't know if he even knows what he'll be exempting at that level because that's a self-reporting instrument right now, not an instrument of, of, of an actual seeing through exemptions. Another thing, I'm curious, Marie. We talk about these exemptions. If a business is exempt, it doesn't unrequire them to report. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So this discussion about whether you're exempt or not, the simple, the simple answer to that is, if you are exempt, you can put exempt on your receipt. If you are in a tax jurisdiction to where you're in the tourism industry and it's a tax-free on items that you're selling, zero. It's zero because it's zero. But Marie, more than anything else, do you believe this is rocket science? And do you think that you couldn't iron these things out through rules and regs?
So the concern that the staff and I have with regard to this, we did, you know, have a discussion on this. It's really the reliance on what is printed on the receipt. Because again, it doesn't take into consideration certain things, you know, whether, I mean, what do you do when there's an amended return? What do you do? And remember that, I believe it's three years? Three years for a return to be amended. And believe it or not, Mr. Chair, there are taxpayers still that come back and I'm signing, I'm signing off on, you know, I'm approving exemptions that weren't taken at the time of reporting. For whatever reason, there are still taxpayers out there that, whether it's not a clear understanding of what is exempt or how they can take that exemption or some other reason, but there are still, you know, forms that are filed to be able to get refunded because they did not, or an abatement because they didn't take an exemption. So, you know, the part of printing it on the receipt, you know, sure, that does not seem very difficult. But if we are going to rely on that data to reconcile what actually gets paid, that's where it's going to be, you know, it's going to require a more in-depth review and, you know, discussion of how, how can we do that?
Marie, how do you envision if for some reason we could go and meet with bondholders and others who understand our current tax system and basically say, we're going to do a study with Revenue Tax, a five-year study that goes in and takes the history of the BPT? And that if we were to turn this into a sales tax, that this would be either net neutral or it could be an improvement or whatever the case may be? If that were to happen, would you have the same problems implementing a sales tax?
Well, you know, I personally have spoken out about, just on a personal level, certainly not representative of the agency itself. You know, in some cases, I think that it kind of makes it a little bit easier. But I think we all know where we want to be. We just kind of differ on how to get there. So I really would like, I would like to invite you all. In fact, when the body first came into office, our plan was such that we were going to hold an orientation, particularly for those new to the legislature, so that you can come over and see what all our branches are about. You can come in. We have nothing to hide. You know, if anything, we are so, our staff, they work tirelessly. Everyone's mentally, if not physically exhausted. And yet we continue on because, to Senator Turlae's point, you know, you work for the people. You know, I'm sure you all, you know, have that opinion as well. But I think, you know, again, we know where we want to be. We all have the same goals, but I think we kind of differ on how to get there. And certainly for us at Revenue and Tax, we simply comply.
You know, Marie, I have to say too, and well-intended, many of my colleagues here over the years, to include retiring speakers, have advocated heavily, you need more attorneys, you need more enforcement, you need more of this, more of that, to collect, to collect, to collect. Right? So I don't see any problem with these same people saying, yes, let's get you what you need to be able to do this project going forward, should it become law. I frankly find some of the objection a little bit laughable, to be quite honest with you. And I don't think that, I mean, if our Northern Marianas brothers and sisters can implement a value-added tax with, I'm sure, exemptions and different things that they have in their tax code, I'm a little bit embarrassed to think that we couldn't do something like this or acting as though, you know, we need Elon Musk to be able to come to Guam and figure this out for us. I, like I said, it's frankly kind of laughable to me. But anyways, I want to close with this. One of the hallmarks of Department of Revenue and Taxation from my perspective and many other people who I know do business with Revenue Tax is your complete transformation in many areas to online and to your advancement in technology. And I know we need more manpower. We're never going to not need more manpower. But let's be honest, Marie. I go up there every once in a while just for different reasons. I don't see the lines and lines and lines that used to be there every month with their paper shuffling and everything else. And sometimes, you know, because they have exemptions, haven't filed their BPT for six months and they're stamp, 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 you know, because that's what happens. I don't see that anymore. Because people are smart and you guys are smart and you have them online. Sometimes with my rental, I go on and do three, four months at a time because it's exempt. It's below the threshold. So I just, a little lazy and go on there and do it when I get around to it because it's zero. The other thing is your business license renewal. Automatic. Like playing, really. Light, even with the license issues you have with driver's licenses and things. For those who have no issues, it's clean. When I went to get Real ID, it was, I had my five forms and I was out of there in 30 minutes. So I just want to also tout your successes and the fact that, you know, that your use of technology really to me should pave the way for many of these proposals that we're having today. Because that is your greatest success. I don't doubt the manpower. I know your budget's there. I reviewed your budget. You're incurring a lot of lapses right now. I don't know whether it's the ability to hire or not to hire. I know a lot of people up there. Some who even come back from retirement and say, hey, I really am happy retired, but I want to help this institution that I love. And give me some people to train because I want to go back to retirement. And they want to do that. They want succession planning. So let's work together. I mean, even if for some reason this bill is problematic and it's going to take us a little longer down the line to, you know, to get Elon to Guam, the bottom line is, is that in the interim, you know, let's man up. Let's do it together. I don't know what the holdup is, but I know you need help. But I know it's not a budget issue right now. Because I've looked at your finances and you're lapsing quite a bit of money right now. And you have retirees back there, which I know are great employees, but they really want to do succession planning. They want to train the young ones coming in. I don't know whether it means getting together with GCC and UOG and finding a pipeline, you know, saying, hey, this is a great place to go and work. You know, we just did a 22% increase. People are getting paid really well over here now. It's a good job and, you know, let's all work together on that. But you have a comment, Marie?
I just wanted to thank you for your kind comments. You know, the staff, again, they work really hard. There are frustrations, you know, and it's with certain things that, you know, are beyond our control. But we, I agree with you, sir. We need to continue and it is a work in progress. We need to continue along the lines of automation or just getting into the, you know, digital era. So we continue to work at it. We're happy. You mentioned legal counsel. We're happy that we finally were able to get those positions filled. And, you know, I think they're finding that there's plenty of work at the Department of Revenue and Taxation. We're certainly looking at decades-old policies, the things that need to be updated. We'd like to move toward getting in front of the problems as opposed to having to deal with it. Because most times what we're trying to deal with on a daily basis, we're putting out fires or we're responding to requests or, you know, things that we need to do for the public. And so, you know, just, we know where we want to be again. Sometimes what happens on the way there provides setbacks and we continue to try our best.
Thank you, Marie, and thank you, Benjou. You know, the bottom line is, is that if your success right now that you've demonstrated with your digitization online and platform right now can be completely duplicated, replicated going forward, you're on a great path and good that you have, you know, your attorneys on board. Now, I'll close with this. The Chamber and other businesses are breathing down our neck. Get us back to that 4%. Yet the OPA is over there breathing down our neck. You're under-collecting. You're under-collecting. You don't have your harmonization system with Customs. You're under-collecting on tobacco tax. You're under-collecting on alcohol. So maybe that's the magic. I'm about fair share. I'm not about extra taxes. I'm about fair share. And this is the kind of thing that we're all trying to do here. Like you said, we all have a different way of getting there. But in order to be a community that's operating properly, that's providing services, we need to be efficient. But we also need to make sure that, you know, fair share is the, is the rule of the day. So with that, we're going to move on to, that we're going to consider Bill 59-38 having been heard. The next bill on our agenda is Senator Borja's bill. And once again, this bill is 90-38 COR, introduced by Senator Vicente A. V. Borja, an act to amend 26203.2 of Chapter 26, Title 11, Guam Code Annotated, relative to permanently increasing the gross threshold for limited exemptions on the business privileged taxes for certain small taxes, or small businesses, excuse me. Senator Borja, you're recognized on your bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Buenos a día to all those joining us today and thank you for being part of this important conversation. This morning, we're here to discuss Bill Number 90-38, a measure I introduced to amend the Dave Santas Act, legislation that has served as a cornerstone for small business tax relief on our island. The intent of this bill is simple, to provide more breathing room for Guam's small businesses, particularly as they continue to recover from the compounded impacts of the pandemic and Typhoon Moar. Under the current law, only businesses earning up to $500,000 annually qualify for a reduced 3% business privilege tax on their gross income. But we know that many of our mom-and-pop stores, family-run enterprises and small service providers exceed that threshold and they've told us loud and clear, they need more support. Bill 90-38 proposes to raise that ceiling, allowing businesses with gross annual incomes of up to $2 million to qualify, with a reduced BBT applying to their first $1 million. This isn't just a number change. It's a policy shift designed to reach more local businesses, give them room to grow and empower them to reinvest in their operations, their employees and their future. The intent of this bill is also to keep up with the rising cost of goods and services while ensuring that our local entrepreneurs still see Guam as viable and a sustainable economy where they can not only survive but thrive. While many of us share the long-term goal of reducing the business privilege tax to 4% across the board, we recognize that this must be done responsibly and in phases. And this bill represents one of those critical steps forward. I want to thank Governor Luli Angora for highlighting the need to revisit the Dave Santas Act during her State of the Island address while she proposed the $1 million threshold. After careful consultation with our business community, we believe that expanding it to $2 million more accurately reflects today's economic realities. This legislation is about balance, ensuring we continue to have thoughtful discussions around reducing the BPT while taking practical steps to support more small businesses right now. I look forward to hearing from our stakeholders today, DRT, our entrepreneurs, industry leaders and everyday small business owners whose voices are the driving force behind this bill. Your input will help shape a policy that supports growth, resilience and a stronger economy for Guam. Sis Massey, and let's continue working together to build a better future for our island. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, para algo, Senator Borja. So we have signed up Marie Lezama from DRT for oral and written. We also have Tina Garcia signed up from Gida for oral and written. And. Yeah, and so we have Jerome also here from Revenue Tax. Jerome, again, to probably answer any questions I would imagine. So at this time, Ms. Marie and Ms. Tina, please come forward to provide your testimony. Marie, I'll go with you first since you've been hanging in there, taking the arrows. Thanks.
So, you know, and I apologize specifically to Senator Borja, but, you know, so analysis continues on the fiscal impact of this bill. But we've already estimated that about 663 taxpayers fall into the gross annual income threshold of greater than $502 million. In addition to the extraction of data, an intense review and calculation of over 300,000 GRT line items filed by over 15,000 GRT taxpayers will need to be conducted. And that includes, that's information for. And that includes, that's information for, um, calendar year 2023 and 2024. I, I should say that, you know, as we continue to do this analysis, you know, we will need to do just a very thorough review of it because anything, you know, I, I would not, it would be irresponsible for me to give a number and then have you hang your hat on that and then, uh, you know, I'm going to have to change that. We are concerned, of course, what the impact will be to the general fund and we will certainly share the results of that analysis with you as soon as we can. But I just wanted to tell you that the, um, the scope of the, um, of the review includes those, those numbers. Thank you.
Sisus Masi, uh, Ms. Tina Garcia, um, please proceed with your testimony and welcome to the Guam Legislature.
Hafte Day and good mornings, Senator Duñez and members of the Committee on Finance and Government Operations. My name is Tina Garcia and I'm currently the Acting Chief Executive Officer and Administrator of the Guam Economic Development Authority. My apologies as our Deputy Carlos Vidalio is currently off island. I'm here today to provide testimony in support of Bill Number 90 dash 38. This bill recognizes a fundamental truth about our island's economy. Small businesses are the backbone of our economy. GIDA is confident that Guam's economy is steadily recovering. Business privilege tax collections are robust, which is an indicator of high levels of consumer activity for products and services. Visitor arrivals, although still well below pre-pandemic levels, are trending upward, signaling a gradual but encouraging rebound that is expected to strengthen as the year progresses. Additionally, we are witnessing a renewed interest in both local and international investment, coupled with a growing entrepreneur spirit among our people, as more individuals are motivated to launch new businesses. However, we do acknowledge that there are still sectors of our economy that are experiencing significant challenges. By permanently increasing the gross receipts thresholds for BPT exemptions, this legislation will provide meaningful relief to small business owners who continue to face financial challenges due to rising costs, supply chain disruptions and recovery from the long-term effects of the COVID-19 pandemic. For businesses operating just above the current threshold, the burden of the tax can stifle growth and discourage hiring, investment or even staying in operation. This bill would allow those businesses to reinvest their savings into improving operations, expanding services and hiring local talent, benefiting the wider community. As mentioned, Governor Luli Angora did state in her State of the Island address, underscored this issue and expressed support in increasing the gross threshold to 1 million. GIDA stands ready to work with the administration, the legislature and the business community and continue to work towards a tax environment that fosters local economic development, promotes sustainability and protects the future of Guam's small business community. I just wanted to, to see if perhaps there's a technical amendment on the bill, page two, line three, as the threshold should read as $1 million to correspond with the bill, lot, page one, line seven to eight. Not sure if that was, um, or vice versa. Um, at this point, thank you for your time and attention. If you have any questions, um, I'm here to and available to discuss. Thank you.
Thank you, Tina. We appreciate that testimony. Um, I'm going to go ahead and defer to the author at this time, uh, to ask any questions he may have.
No, I, I think, you know, thank you for, um, your testimony again, um, DRT and, um, GIDA for coming down as well. Um, you know, the, of course, the, um, we were hoping to get the fiscal impact, of course, as we were, um, you know, on the fiscal note, it didn't note though that there was, um, you know, that it was, or at least want to at least make a note for the record that after the reviewing the fiscal note, there, it was indicated though that there was nothing provided, was there, there was a response that was BBM was waiting for from DRT was because you guys are still working on, on collecting that. Um, but yeah, so, you know, it'll definitely obviously help us as we continue to, to understand the, you know, the impact. Obviously this was triggered, you know, the, the introduction of this bill came after the, the governor's State of the Island, um, a lot higher than what she, she, um, you know, recommended or, or asked us to do in, in her address. So as soon as we, you know, it'll help us get a clear analysis, um, and my colleagues as well, because that's going to be important. But I have no questions. Thank you, uh, GIDA for, for the support of this bill and your testimony. Uh, no further questions. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Borja. Senator Anna, Vice Speaker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Just to Marie, uh, how long do you think it'll take to do the, a complete fiscal analysis of the, on what's proposed on this legislation?
We've already pulled the data and it's a matter of just analyzing that. So hopefully in the next day or so.
Okay. So it's not too long from now where you'll be able to give us the...
Yeah, no, just, it's just the same people that are, are doing that. You know, we're also having to comply with other things that are also time sensitive. So, yeah, we will, we will get back to you as soon as we can, hopefully in the next few days.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Vice Speaker. Senator Gumitato, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, uh, thank you again, uh, Marie and Revan Tax and, and hello to Tina from GIDA. Thanks for, uh, being with us this morning. Uh, Mr. Chair, I only have a few questions if I could and maybe Marie, if you can, uh, just for clarification and for the record today, what BPT rate is assessed on businesses that earn $40,001 or more, but not in excess of $500,000?
Okay, I'm probably going to defer that to Jerome, but it sounds like it's kind of, uh, one or the other. There's, so you have the Dave Santas Act, right, which is under $50,000. And then you have, um, then you have above that to, uh, $500,000 would be the, um, Lexby, the limited, uh, exemptions for certain small businesses. And so the 2% is what I believe on the Lexby.
So, um, it really depends, normally the exemption amount or what is allowed is based on the previous year's, um, gross receipts. And so depending, you know, on the actual taxpayer, uh, what the previous year's income amount was, that can determine what exemption, whether it be the Dave Santas or possibly the, uh, Lexby, excuse me, um, which, which one or what they might qualify for. So we, you know, there's a look back, which is the previous year, calendar year where you, you take a look at what the, so, but if they qualify for the, the Lexby, then it's the reduction, you know, from the 5%, the 2% reduction. So it would be a 3% for that, um, amount. And if it is the Dave Santas, uh, law that they qualify for, then they don't, there is a exemption on all of the amount of the tax.
So you're testifying this morning that the rate between $40,001 or more, but not in excess of $500,000 is 3%? That's what you're testifying this morning?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm actually just, I, it, it really depends on the, the previous year's, uh, reporting.
And, and I think, again, just like in the last bill, if you can, for the committee and for this particular bill, can you provide back to the, for the, for our markup process, a letter to answer that question? What BPT rate is assessed on businesses that earn $40,001 or more, but not in excess of $500,000? And because then my next question would be, if you can, describe those businesses that may fall in that income range based on filing, the tax filings with DRT for the last three years. So in that same letter, if you can, can you just generally describe the types of businesses? And it's an important distinction for this particular measure, which will get to my second question, Mr. Chair, recognizing that the exemptions that are proposed in this bill would become effective upon enactment. And maybe Tina can help with this. What is the estimated fiscal impact on the general fund in fiscal year 2025 and fiscal year 2026? And how exactly will the proposed changes in this measure affect our annual debt service requirement in the current and subsequent fiscal years?
Um, as it relates to the debt service, um, we're, we're required to report our debt service coverage, meaning if our debt service is $50,000, we have a debt service coverage of about 1.50, for instance. That means we have to collect a minimum of, um, 150,000, right? Or, yeah, 50, 150. So right now with the current collections, we have a very strong debt service coverage. So by reducing the, or by increasing the exemption, we don't feel it'll have a significant impact on the debt service coverage.
Okay, Tina, with that said, again, so, so the estimated fiscal impact, I know you said it's not going to have a lot, but you have a, maybe a round number that you can share for the, for the record today?
The only thing we have on record or published, um, is from BSP, their, um, statistical yearbook and based on 2022. The, um, year to date, there's about, um, 1,700, 726 establishments taking advantage of the current threshold of 500,000 and below. And additional, to increase it to a million, um, that threshold from 500 to 1 mil, you're adding another 587 businesses. So about, um, a total establishment of 2,313 establishments out of 3,412 recorded on Guam. And so based on that, I mean, we, you know, we wait for Revan Tax to, to provide that information, but we use that data to kind of guide us.
And Tina, that data is from FY '23. So that, obviously that's different and that would be different in the next fiscal year and beyond.
Right.
Okay.
That was for 2022.
And no, and I thank you for framing that for us. And I guess as we proceed, those two critical figures are important for this measure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. That's all I have.
Sisus Masi, Senator Gumitato. Senator Lohan, you're recognized at this time?
I'm good, Mr. Chair.
Okay, moving along. Senator Chulahi, you're recognized at this time.
Sisus Masi, Mr. Chair. Could either of you tell us, so I think the governor estimated that, um, 90% of businesses were, uh, taking advantage of this $500,000 current exemption. And that's, um, yeah, she says nearly 90% of our businesses are paying 3% only because of these exemptions. Did you calculate, um, so the bill makes two increases. I, I kind of thought the governor was only suggesting one, but the bill makes two. So to increase the previous year's, um, threshold income to 2 million instead of 1 million, have you made that calculation?
So again, we've pulled the data and we need to analyze, um, the actual impact of it.
All right. If you could analyze, uh, if we only did that, yeah, how, how many from the 90% would we be increasing from 90% to what? Because she also said she doesn't believe that we should be cutting taxes in the same speech with those who are, um, the big contractors for the military buildup and, and things like that. And, uh, how does she describe it? Uh, big businesses or federal contractors making millions on Guam, not when one of the largest corporate tax cuts in recent memories likely to pass in Washington DC. All right. And then, and then, yeah, separately, the, the exemption itself. So we lose, instead of losing 500,000, we will be losing a million dollars in revenue from, not sure, the percentage of how many more people that would cover, who are now covered under this $2 million exemption. The, yeah, go ahead.
Oh, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Oh, no, I, I was just going to say, well, but this one was based on 2 million. As I mentioned, we identified that approximately 663 taxpayers fall within that threshold above or five, above 500,000. So, but this one was up to 2 million. And if I, uh, understand you correctly, ma'am, you're actually wanting us to do to the million?
No, 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 no. I'm sorry. You're, you're correct. So that was, you said 300?
It was 663 taxpayers. But what we're trying to analyze or review is over 300,000 GRT, um, line items. And so, um, that's, that's the reason for the, um, for the delay. Okay.
Okay. Can you explain that?
So we've, we've pulled the numbers. You know, we've, we've pulled the numbers. We actually had this because if I'm not mistaken, I mean, you know, when there was an adjustment to Lexby, I guess a few years ago, we had, you know, we pulled the numbers already. So we have that. What we would like to do though, is have a more in-depth review of the true, which would result in the true fiscal impact, uh, with regard to the proposed legislation. So if you can just, uh, we're hoping to get that in a few days.
Explain what would you, you would be analyzing in the details? Why, why is it not just 663 additional times, um, $500,000 additional loss revenue?
Well, there could be other things on the GRT form that's, that, you know, they filed. So that's why we had to, we have to take a look at the lines that actually would apply to the proposed legislation or would be affected by the proposed legislation. And I've included a copy of the GRT online form.
There was supposed to be when we passed the last, um, change to this statute, uh, reports by DRT every five years showing the different categories and the exemptions. Are those being filed?
We're, we're trying to, um, we're trying to work on that.
I wasn't able to find them. That's why. So, all right. That's to me, one of the things we were supposed to be using in order to make this determination going forward.
Sure.
So T, T, uh, Director Garcia, what would you calculate estimate to be the impact? Because you're saying we're going to reduce our revenues coming in. That's not going to affect our debt service coverage, but, um, why not? Yeah. I mean, you're basing that, what is the amount that you think this will change revenues It only does not reduce your coverage if we are not increasing our appropriations, right?
Right. Oops. So, um, what we have, what, I mean, just again, this is old data that we guide ourselves with and, um, we don't look at the individual rates, we look at the total. I mean, based on 2022, um, numbers, we're looking at about maybe a nine, $9 million impact. But again, um, we don't look at the individual right now. We're just looking at total collections.
What, what was your number? Sorry.
So, um, the threshold of sales and revenues between 500 to 999 in 2022 dollars was at 420 million. 5% of that is 21 million. Uh, 3% is 12.6. So you're looking at about roughly nine mil. So you're looking at about roughly 9 mil.
All right. And how does that not affect, in the fiscal note, BBMR said that we are not supposed to reduce the services, products, or activities to which the pledge BPT applies?
Right. What we're doing here is we are preserving the 3%, which is the pledge.
Okay.
So we're not touching the 3%. We're, you know, the current 5%, we're just reducing it at that level, so.
All right. Well, how would we know, what calculation would we use to know how much we can do? I mean, so you're saying this will only reduce revenues coming into the government by 9 million?
Again, I'm using 2022 dollars. When you look at total collections of BPT, and we look at the debt service that's due on that, and as long as we have that debt service coverage of about 1 and 1/2, then we are complying with our bond requirements. Right now, our debt service coverage is probably like 3 to 4, 4x.
All right, thank you.
Okay.
Yeah, so I appreciate all your testimony, Mr. Chair. I would just ask that if we're going to get new numbers from revenue and taxation, that we perhaps have another hearing so that we can discuss those numbers with them, how they came up with them, and further flesh that out. Because any reduction in revenue is going to reduce our ability to cover current costs that we are covering by, with this current revenue. And so I just want to make sure, the governor seemed to have calculated based on a 1 million, but this is a 2 million. And BBMR's fiscal note said it would impact the bond, so using your testimony. But yeah, so I understand what you're saying, that it does not. So that's fine. But yeah, otherwise, I just want to make sure that we can see the actual numbers before we move forward. Sidoz Massey, Mr. Chair.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Chulahi, and I'm sure our chamber friends are watching closely this hearing today, because, holy cow, when we go to the bill on 5% to 4%, that's going to be a fun one. Gita, I need to ask you this, Tina, because this is a slide, and I've been wanting to do this, I provided this for the chamber when I met with them last week. And I want to ask my staff to pass this out. This was presented at the Association of, what do you call it, Auditors Conference several weeks ago, and this was presented by Gita. Dave Santos Exemption Amendment. As of September 2024, 16,83 businesses were filing BPT. 1,804, or 11.2% were paying the full 5%. 11.2% of businesses accounted for 94% of tax collections. So that means that, then, if I do my quick and dirty math, the 1804 minus the 1683 businesses, around 14,300 businesses are paying the 3%. So right now, the governor seems to be absolutely correct, that with 1804 businesses, or only 11.2% paying the full 5%, this seems to be a pretty small number in comparison to the overall businesses paying taxes. Do you stand by these numbers presented by Gita?
I believe these were presented at the time by Mel Mindiola.
Yes.
So I have to validate her information, and I'm pretty sure these numbers are very close to what I'm looking at today, that the impact is not as great.
So between Marie and yourself, it's pretty clear that what the governor has been representing, that it is a lot of these big contractors, it is a lot of these large-scale businesses and others who are really paying full freight at the 5%.
Yes.
So today, we're here to try to help small businesses and extend and expand small businesses' ability to thrive and stay alive in this environment, and to go from the level of businesses currently paying that 3% and expand that pool of small businesses who we keep trying to say we're trying to help, trying to help those little guys. And there's a lot, a lot of little guys. There's 14,300 little guys, and there's 1,804 big guys. So I just want to make sure, because this is the conversation now, that we've decided to take up these very critical measures, all this discussion, you know, lower the taxes, lower the taxes, lower the tax burden. We need facts on the table. And I have to say, at this point in time, the numbers that are bearing out here is other members of our community, they've been writing letters to the editor, as well as the governor's representation, that this 90-10 is an accurate statement, at least by what the information we have right now. So with that, I will go to Senator Calvo, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a day and buenas, everybody. You know, I had an extensive amount of back and forth with the author of the bill, my good friend here, Senator Borja, with regards to this. And I truly support helping our small businesses. But during our conversation, when we were talking about it, I was very inclined to support the 1 million threshold, and I truly don't have a problem with that, only because going up, I just wanted to be careful and conservative about things. I know we're discussing about 2 million threshold here. I do understand that our government have obligations, although I'm considering, you know, the recent statements, just this, that I just heard, and recent statement of our chair, Senator Duñez. I just want to make sure that we're careful, that we take care of the commitments that we need to service. And I just want to be cautious on any long-term sustainability of public finances. We should be careful not to jeopardize any commitments if exceptions are not carefully managed. At the 1 million threshold, I'm gonna, I'm really okay with that, but I'm going to keep an open mind with this because of this data that we just discussed. I just want to know, how many additional businesses, to be exact, if you guys have the number, that's earning between 500 to 2 million would qualify for the exemption? Because the data that was presented earlier was during 2022, and we're already on 2025.
So the data that DRT is working on is for 2023 and 2024. And what we've estimated is there are 663 taxpayers that would fall between that range.
Thank you, thank you for that answer, for clarifying that. Are there any proposals, you know, because my concern is just falling short on our obligations, right? But are there any proposals or recommendations to offset the potential loss in tax revenue caused by this exemption expansion?
Well, you know, for DRT, we refrain, right, from trying to kind of draft legislation on our side. So we really just kind of take a look at, you know, the numbers and so forth. And honestly, Senator, what we do struggle with, and of course, but we continue to try to keep at, is simply collecting what's owed to us, you know, to the government. So of course, there are some factors that affect that collection, but that's really what, you know, I believe that Mr. Chair mentioned, you know, it's really not trying to obtain additional, you know, but rather, you know, just, we're just trying to collect what is rightfully owed to the government of Guam.
Understand.
Senator, if I could add.
Sure.
You know, we work with a lot of small businesses, and having that little extra amount, again, would help in improving operations, buying more inventory, it would help the business in return. So having that money would provide that, help them with that.
Tremendous support to the businesses.
Yeah.
And I truly understand that, and I truly support that notion, because the small businesses are really the backbone, they're tiny little backbone of our fragments of bones of our community. So at this dire time that we're experiencing, and our community is in hardship, it's truly important for us to support small businesses. And that's why I said to my good colleague here, Senator Borja, author of the bill, that I do support it. 1 million. I support the 1 million. Oh, a good Senator Jesse here wittingly said 1 million, 1 million times. Anyway, on that note, I thank you for your testimonies, and thank you for answering my curious questions, and thank you for being here. Sidoz Massey, Mr. Chair.
Sidoz Massey, Senator Calvo. Senator Telotidegui, you're recognized at this time.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon, Tina. Welcome to the table. And just looking at this document that was just passed out to us by the chairman, you know, I know you have to confirm this with Mel to get the right numbers, but, you know, if you do the math, it looks like, okay, well, there's 16,083 businesses filing BPT. And then, so if you subtract that based on today, it's 14,279 small businesses, 14,279 that exempt from the 500,000, correct? So that means of the 100, I mean, 1,804, would you know, maybe, Marie, would you know how many would now avail themselves of the 2 million of that 1,084? 663?
Yeah, I don't, yeah. I would say.
Okay, you mentioned something, yeah, I know, I have something here.
663?
663 taxpayers, but is that, is that avail themselves of the 2 million? Because, so then I would take 1,804 minus 663?
663.
Okay. And it says, of course, that 94% of that 1,804, you know, is the 94% is collected in taxes. I'd really like to see, you know, if these numbers are true to form, because that's quite a bit. I mean, might as well roll back the BPT then, because hardly nobody's paying anything. But then again, you know, that's 95, 94% of the tax collection of that 1,804, that's quite big. There's a lot of unanswered questions we have, you know, and I agree with Senator Chulahi that I think we need to come back to this and to look at the numbers and adjust this, because people don't realize that, you know, even though that the CRER is showing an increase, I mean, very low compared to in the past, you know, we're seeing now a trend. It's not like, you know, constantly $30 million every month that we're getting in excess of. But we have to also realize that we are now close to about $10 million in lost revenue under special funds. You know, that's quite a bit. I think it's around, we're about 8 million, 8 million right now to date on our special funds. We are in the negative. So that's very alarming for us. A lot of the questions I had were asked, and of course, a lot of them were not answered. So again, like I said, I appreciate, Mr. Chair, if we can come back to the table on this and find out, once they get the numbers put in place, it'll be very helpful and give us a clearer path on what we're looking financially for this government of Guam. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Certainly, Senator Tadegui, and I believe the calculation now on the 1% as opposed to 2018, when the 1% went up, is $90 million. So sharpen your pencils, committee chairs, because $90 million is more than likely, and maybe in excess of that, is what would need to be cut off the current revenue anticipation on the 1%. So a lot of work to do. Not for this bill, Madam Speaker. It is for the 1%. Should we contemplate? And I will hear that bill, yes, another bill. But it is important, because there has been a lot of discussion by this panel today about the impact of even these proposals, Senator Chulahi. So I am bringing about the perspective, and this is why I provided this committee and other members with this picture. I don't believe Mel presented inaccurate information. And if that's the case, we need to realize and recognize what we're really talking about here. We're talking about small businesses, and we're talking about big businesses. And today, we're trying to help small businesses with several other bills, so that's why I'm bringing it up. But you remember, because you were there, Senator, when the 1% increase based on revenues during the time of somewhere around 650 to 700 million in general fund was an impact of $60 million to the general fund. We are now appropriating close to 1.3 billion overall, actually 1.7 billion when you take federal funds into consideration, 1.3, and GRT alone, along with other taxes, are approaching the 900 million area, which would mean approximately $90 million that we would be having to cut in revenue from the general fund, just so that we understand what we're talking about here. This is why I wanted to hear these bills today, so that we all get an understanding of what this picture looks like as we have all this federal uncertainty, and as we delve into the fiscal year budget, as my retiring colleague just mentioned, is tracking very precariously low. And we have now probably appropriated our revenues up to the level of what the expectation of revenues are coming in, and not excess revenues. Senator Parkinson, you're recognized.
Mr. Chair.
I'll recognize you for a follow-up after Senator Parkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Yeah, this document is very stark. 1804, we're paying full 5%, that's 11.2% of the 16,083 businesses filing BPT. And that 11.2% of businesses accounted for 94% of tax collections. Wow. It was, it's really something to see, the idea that 88.8% of our businesses are small businesses. That is a very significant number. But just as significant is this 11.2% that pay 94% of tax collections. I have to echo the sentiments of my fellow colleague, Senator Shelley Calvo, that, you know, when I first heard of this idea, I was on board with a million, just on the concept of it. I thought, you know, maybe with inflation being what it is, there's room to really expand it. And before I saw this, I thought 2 million might be a little much. I mean, how many, how many small business owners do you know that are grossing 2 million a year? I don't know very many. So I mean, I thought that figure seemed a little out of reach for what I'd say a small business is, but I was open to it. But after this, I feel that 663 of the 1804 that pay 94% of the tax collections, that can be a pretty significant haircut. And that leads to deficiencies in service, people falling through the cracks, social safety nets not getting the necessary funding. And so I think it's with great pause that we should... And so I think it's with great pause that we should consider this. And I think, honestly, I think this takes 2 million as the threshold immediately off the board. And I think we should give great pause to whether we should even extend it to a million. Because 88%, 88.8% are already exempt, 90, 10, pretty close. I think that Dave Santos Exemption Act is doing, doing what's intended to do. It's helping a majority of small businesses. And so we really need to ask ourselves, is extending it to a million, to 2 million, really helping small businesses? Is, is that what small is these days, what, you know? And so, yeah, this is just such a stark number that it would be irresponsible of us to not really consider it. So, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. You've given us a lot to think about. Without the yield the rest of my time.
Sisus Masi, Senator Parkinson. For a follow-up, Senator Chalahi.
Wanted to ask, Mr. Chair, if OFB has an estimate of the impact of this bill? Like a number estimate, an amount?
Uh, from what I understand, OFB is in concurrence with the BBMR testimony.
Which is that it would impact the bond? That's, isn't that their testimony?
I believe that all of this discussion is being couched, based on consideration of not having the exact number right now, that we would have to ensure that the 3% pledge is, continues to be what we have done going forward in terms of how we have represented that as the complete cap. Now, I know there are other calculations with regard to what the 3% means, because when you don't eliminate the 3% and you keep the 3%, the bondholders get their money off the top. The rest is, uh, fish or, how do they say that, cut bait? So the truth is, it's 3% still the 3%. Now, if we were to eliminate the 3%, that would be where we would get ourselves into the waters whereby, uh, there would be consideration for calls. But as long as the 3% is the 3%, all we do is do it to ourselves. Because what we would do is we'd have the reduction in general fund revenue available for appropriation, but not what's taken off the top. The caution here is to have the numbers.
Yeah, okay, so that's, I guess, what I was asking, because according to, uh, BBMR, they say they are unable to determine an approximate fiscal impact at this time. They're waiting for information from DRT. We're waiting for information from DRT. We are operating without knowing the real impact. All right. Sisus Masi, I was hoping OFB had some numbers.
Correct, Madam Chair. And that's one of the reasons why I wanted to put this out, and I have no problem with follow-up, uh, you know, uh, oversight hearings, roundtables, whatever else, but there is a clamor in this community for tax reductions.
Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
Just wanted to correct, uh, a comment I made earlier. Um, I, I did look again at the CRR. We are actually 6.6 million short in the, uh, this month's CRR. I just want to make the, I said that it was 10, but it's actually 6.6 million short in CRR.
That's correct. But even at that.
Special funds.
That's correct, Senator, but even at that. So that takes us to 24 million in excess revenue tracking, and the governor's budget request currently asks for 44 million in addition to what our current levels are. So even if we realized every dime of that 24 million that we're tracking right now, we would be $22 million short, or 44, again, 20-some million dollars short of what the governor's current projection is calling for. That's where we are right now. So as we move forward, um, would you like to close on the bill, Senator Borja?
Yes, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, you know, these last hundred-some days have been a little bit confusing. You know, today, we have the other side saying they want to help the middle class, now we're wanting to lower the cost of living. But for me, I'm just going to focus on doing what's right for our community, from sustaining higher education, helping GDOE, and today, lowering the cost of living. Mr. Chair is the new senator. I want to thank you for your partnership and leadership this term for, with these bills, and I look forward to the data from, um, DRT so that, you know, we can make sound decisions as we move forward. Thank you, Sisus Masi, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Borja. And so we now will consider, uh, Bill 90-38, having been heard, and we will move, um, quickly and efficiently to the next, uh, bill. The next bill up for consideration is Bill Number 71-38COR, introduced by William A. Parkinson, an act to indefinitely suspend the business privilege tax on baby products, feminine hygiene products, food incontinence products, medical devices and medicine, and to cite this act as the Guam Crisis Readiness and Economic Relief Act of 2025. A very, very nice title. You're now recognized at this time, Senator Parkinson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Guam Crisis Readiness and Economic Relief Act of 2025 is pretty straightforward. It removes the business privilege from essential goods and provides much really tax relief to our struggling small businesses. Now, I know that we cannot completely reduce the BPT to 0%. We have a fiscal obligation to at least pay the 3%. However, I introduce this bill as a full repeal, just so that the people of Guam at home could see that it's not an unwillingness to cut it all the way that stops us. There are legitimate fiscal reasons related to the bonds that tie our hands. This bill will be amended to go from 5% to 3% to comply with our necessary bonds. That has always been the intention, and the introduction was just to have this conversation regarding the bonds and have it out in the open. And so I thank, uh, I thank the people that prepared the fiscal note for their due diligence. The things this bill targets, food and groceries, medicine and medical supplies, baby care products and elder care items, are meant to target sectors of our community that need the help the most. And with this impending trade war, with the uncertainty in the Pacific, it is incumbent on us to stockpile and prepare before this coming economic and geopolitical storm we see on the horizon. And today, we've heard a lot of testimony about the split of the tax burden, that very stark reminder that close to 90% of our businesses are small and 1,800 businesses carry the burden of 94% of our tax relief, or of our tax, of our tax collections. And I've always been skeptical of the idea that reducing our BPT will lead to cost reductions and savings for the consumer. I've always believed that if we were to introduce BPT reductions, that we would not see tax relief, we would, it would just be pocketed by, by the wealthy who would just get it as an extra windfall. However, I have to question my own biases and my own preconceptions, and this bill is an effort, an olive branch, to see if there is any merit to that idea. If we grant these tax cuts for food and groceries, medicine and medical supplies, baby care products and elder care items, and we see significant savings for our community, maybe we can have an extended dialogue on expanding the reduction of the BPT to other sectors, because then we will have proof of concept that we can reduce the BPT and it will lead to lower prices. I myself am skeptical of the idea that reduction of BPT will lead to lower prices. And so it was with great hope and some trepidation that I advanced this bill forward. I challenge the business community, that top 11% that carries the tax burden. If we open this door for you and provide you this tax relief, this tax relief that affects the millionaires of our island, will it actually lead to lower prices? Because if we move forward with this and there is no price relief, then there is no further discussion on reducing the BPT on anything else, as far as I'm concerned. And so let us move forward in this experiment in a limited capacity. If we reduce the BPT on food and groceries, medicine and medical supplies, baby care products and elder care items, maybe this discussion has some merit. And so don't let it be confused that even though I am the prime sponsor of this bill, I approached this bill with great skepticism, but also some optimism that this could be a bridge to meaningful discussion on tax reform. So with that, Mr. Chair, I ask everybody in this body not to come out with a yes, not to come out with a no, but to think about it thoughtfully. Because that, this sheet, it's a stark, stark encapsulation of what the tax burden looks like. And we need to go with great judiciousness moving forward if we are going to expand these tax cuts, which will primarily hit the rich. We couch it in helping small businesses, but I recognize that on some level, this would be a tax cut for the rich. But I'm doing it in the hopes that they lower their prices because they're able to service the community at scale. And at scale, they can meaningfully drop prices that help working-class people. So this will be a nuanced discussion, and it will be one that I welcome all debate towards. With that, I yield the rest of my time, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Masi, Senator Parkinson. Um, I am not going to, um, murder anybody's names, so I'm going to do it this way. Uh, I'd like to call out Catherine from Poly, Polydick Pharmacy, and, uh, also we have Maria Zama here already, we have Tina Garcia here, uh, also Jeremy Mariano from, uh, GPNA, I believe that is, Arthur Mariano from Megadrug, and we have, of course, Jerome Uggan already here, and then we have, uh, from GMH, uh, the CEO, Lilian Perez-Pazares, and I, I believe, legal counsel, Jordan, um, to come forward as well. Are the other individuals, um, still with us? I believe they may have been seated outside. Yes, you can come forward, uh, to the table. We're still on the previous bill, yeah, okay. I'm going off of the sheet that I was provided with. So we now have, uh, our panel here, uh, for the bill currently under consideration, 71-38. Um, and so I will ask you now, uh, to proceed. Go ahead, Marie, and, uh, then we'll go down the line here once again.
My apologies, um, Mr. Chair. I know at the beginning of your, at the beginning of the session, you mentioned that you were afraid that we were going to come to the point where we've said that we haven't parceled or sectioned out certain products, and I'm afraid that that is the case. The GRT section of the current GRT online form covers business activities as opposed to products or even specific products at that. Should this bill pass, we will need to work with our vendor to ensure that the form and programming are modified. And as noted in other bills involving BPT, the monitoring for compliance and our reconciliation of data will require dedicated staff. Um, I just, just as an aside thing, I think what would greatly help, perhaps in future legislation, would be when Customs actually gets their system. To my understanding, their system is, will be able to drill down into specific products as opposed to just product types, um, so, or just overall products. So I'm, I apologize, we are at the same, uh, point, or perhaps what you had said earlier, that, uh, we are not able, we're, therefore, we're not able to determine what the fiscal impact is because we currently don't track products as opposed to business activities. That's all I have.
Sisus Masi, uh, Marie, and, uh, so now we'll go to Gita.
Um, thank you, uh, Tina Garcia, again, um, acting CEO Administrator Gita. And again, we did present written testimony, um, as, uh, the sponsor, the legislation stated, we do have a bond obligation not to add any exemptions or exclusion that could impair the current pledged business privilege tax. Um, and by adding an exemption or, or, um, exclusion, again, is, um, was an obligation of the government at the time the bond was floated, and if we, and could lead to, um, some kind of, uh, default on the bond, which, you know, is, on the current outstanding is about 600, over 600 million. So we just need to be cautious of what that obligation was when we did the bond first, BPT bond in 2011. So, so that's our testimony, but we, we glad to help with anything else.
Sisus Masi, Tina, um, did you provide that to the committee, your written testimony?
Yes, we did.
Okay.
Um, it was emailed, um, yesterday, but I have a copy here.
Okay, so I'll ask my, could, could we get your copy and make copies of your copy? It's probably more efficient right now.
Yes.
Sisus Masi, I'm, I'm sure we have it. I, it might have just been on, on oversight on our part, but the members, uh, of the panel here want to go ahead and take a look at that. Uh, so, uh, we still have other panel members, so it should be to you on time, senators, uh, before we start the questioning round. Ms. Lilian, uh, please proceed.
Good morning, um, Senator, Chairman of this committee. Thank you for allowing us, um, to, um, provide our comments and our view in terms of this bill, 71-38. Uh, good morning, Senators Hossel. On behalf of the Guam Memorial Hospital, we offer this testimony, and we will provide written, uh, as soon as I get it printed out. We oppose Bill Number 71-38. As the only public hospital on the island, GMHA is committed to compassionate, forward-thinking, quality-driven and safe healthcare that honors the community. This is GMHA's mandate to provide care to our patients regardless of their ability to pay. Title II GCA, subsection 26208, created the Guam Memorial Hospital Pharmaceutical Funds, which appropriate 6.19% of all business privilege taxes collected and requires these funds to be deposited in a separate bank account. Any reduction to the BPT translates to proportionate reduction to the to the GMHA Pharmaceutical Funds. We recognize that bill number 71-38 has the potential to provide temporary relief by reducing the cost of essential items, including baby products, feminine hygiene products, food incontinence products, medical devices and medicine benefiting both our hospital and ultimately the patients that come into the hospital. However, we must also underscore the significant risk this legislation poses to the sustainability and the viability of the hospital pharmaceutical funds, which is vital to our ability to procure pharmaceuticals, medical supplies, medical equipment, blood and blood products, and other critical medications. Given our ongoing financial challenges and the persistent difficulties we face in fulfilling payment obligations to our vendors, we are deeply concerned about the unintended consequences of this bill. Really, it could lead to a demise of the hospital, and is that what we want? While we appreciate the well-intended goals of bill number 71-38, we cannot and do not support this bill. Again, just because of the financial sustainability and viability of the hospital, which is critical service to the community of Guam. Thank you.
Sis Massey, Lilian.
I don't have anything else to add to Ms. Pasadas's testimony.
Okay, Sis Massey. So at this time, the testimony is being passed out that was provided by Gita. And I will now go to Senator Parkinson, as the author of the bill, for any questions or comments of the panel.
Thank you so much for coming in and for your testimony today. I really do appreciate it because it does really highlight what these ongoing discussions about BPT reductions really entail. Any cut to the BPT is going to lead to a reduction in services for our only public hospital. So when we think about these conversations, we definitely need to take into account those elements of it. You know, with this figure of 11.2% of businesses accounting for 94% of tax collections, would you at GMH be in favor of a raise of the BPT as it would help Guam Memorial Hospital?
If it will help the financial sustainability and viability of the hospital, definitely, unless we find alternate sources that will help our public hospital.
And any reduction, even through targeted means such as food, medicine, baby products, elder care items, even targeted reduction, even targeted reductions of the BPT would negatively affect the hospital?
Absolutely, it will.
All right. Thank you very much for your testimony. That gives us a lot to think about. I have no further questions, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Senator Tlahe, you recognize?
Okay, all right, thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you all for your testimony. And it, I guess, so we are again, without data as to what any impact on revenue to the government might be, and therefore, the impact to GMH or any other services that we are providing, we can't tell that right now from the fiscal note, although the fiscal, and there are no calculations yet from DRT. Well, they can, there can be no calculations by DRT at this point because we do not itemize, track these kind of products on our taxes. All right, and according to Gita's written testimony, it's, it will expressly be a default on the bond to do this bill as written. And yeah, I'm also concerned, I guess, you know, the theory, of course, it's great. I want to do any bill that's going to reduce prices. The problem is, is there's a debate whether this type of bill really reduces prices. And according to, so I was looking around at who, who, you know, has talked about it, but the governor really has said it. And she has said that when the last rollback of BPT occurred during the Kamacho administration around 2004, the CPI, Consumer Price Index, went from 76.6 to 82.5, an increase of 7.7%. So prices went up, not down, after taxes were reduced. She said, most businesses currently paying the five, and then the author said, we might change the bill to, instead of a suspension in general on all these products, to reduce it from five to four. I'm not sure how many of these 5% companies are, you know, doing business with these products. But the governor said, those, most businesses currently paying 5% BPT are large international enterprises locally involved in the military buildup, not small island businesses. Small businesses on Guam already benefit from the Dave Santos Act, which provides, as we just discussed earlier. She also said, we must not ensure, or we must ensure that our community is not negatively impacted by the unintended consequences of a wider reduction. Losing this level of revenue would undermine our ability to provide health care, education, public safety, and other essential services. It would force cuts to programs that support the community's well-being, including services for vulnerable populations and critical infrastructure projects. So, of course, right, there's other people who I'm sure are going to say that we don't have the chamber's testimony, do we, Mr. Chair?
They just indicated, and I just got that update about five minutes ago. So perhaps I can send it to the committee once again.
All right. Yeah, if it, what it was last time, they will argue that prices, this will affect prices or it will lead to expanding production, hiring more workers. And that brings me to my question. So when we required, the last time we reduced BPT, and I supported all of the reductions, when we reduced it, one of the reporting on the BPT form was supposed to be, did you hire more workers because of this exemption? Do we have data on that?
For staffing, our BPT staffing?
For companies.
Oh, for companies, I'm sorry.
On the BPT, on the online form, it says, did you hire more employees because of this? It's not on that form, I don't see it. But on the online form, it is. And that was one of, one of the data that we were asking them to check because that was their argument all along, that they would hire more, it would allow them to hire more people. And we wanted to see if they in fact attested to that.
I'll verify that, ma'am, but you know, this form, the GRT form is from online.
Oh, okay, well.
I don't think it shows that.
I printed one out also.
But we'll check and we'll get back to you.
All right, yeah, so that data that's supposed to be reported, remember? I can't find the report again, but it's supposed to help us in these types of situations because we were in this exact same position last time, where we were guessing whether prices would be reduced, whether more employees would be hired or not, and, or whether, you know, those promised impacts would actually occur. But so the only data we have, or I can, I have right now is the one from the governor talking about the CPI, Consumer Price Index, where prices actually went up, not down. And so I would welcome any data that any, any of you can provide. Gita, if you have any data on this type of thing, if lowering BPT such as proposed in the last bill is going to reduce prices for consumers, I really encourage you to submit that. I'm just gonna just. Yeah, it says, I don't know, this is the online form that I printed in. It says, how many employees were hired as a result of, well, this is different maybe, L E C S B?
That's LexB, the limited exemptions for certain small businesses.
Okay.
Yeah.
Do you have data on that one? That's not BPT necessarily? It is BPT exemption.
It is, it's an exemption, but I don't know if we track that particular thing. But Jerome and I will check.
All right, I appreciate that. So I guess, yeah, I do not want to see a decrease in revenues that's going to impact GMH. We are already struggling right now trying to fund GMH more because of the loss of ARP and other things because of the increasing costs. We're also struggling, I think we're going to be struggling very soon, trying to fund DOE with the loss of their federal funds. And maybe, you know, we haven't heard from Public Health yet, you know? So I just say, we have to be very cautious. So we really do need to know amounts that we are going to be impacted by and, and how we're going to make up for that. So I appreciate that. Thank you very much. But if we could guarantee price reduction, then, you know, that's a whole other story. So, Sis Massey, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Senator Tlahe, and also I am having it printed out. But just to answer your question right now, we do have one more bill, of course. The general statement from the chamber on this bill, 71-38, 90-38, 101-38. The Chamber of Commerce says, while this is a step in the right direction, they're calling for bill 1138 to be heard, which is a reduction of the 1% BPT. So I'm going to go ahead and provide this letter. And you might have some other comments, Senator, as we hear the last bill on the agenda today, 101-38. Senator Calvo, you recognize it this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, have a day, and buenas, everyone. Thank you for your testimonies and for being here. I truly, I'm keeping an open mind on this bill. I know there are concerns with regards to, you know, revenue stream and cost of goods not rolling back. So I do understand that we need to carefully consider a lot of aspects. But this is, I know the intention of this bill. This is a well-intended bill wherein it really targets and supports the vulnerable population of our island. It's really for our community. If you really think about it, for infants, young children, women, elderly, and medically challenged, vulnerable individuals. So I don't have any comment or questions at the moment, but being the oversight of these, these demographic, I, I'm really keeping an open mind and probably most likely inclined to support a bill that will really directly impact, you know, our community and help our, our island. On that note, no questions on my end. And I just wanted to say, Sis Massey, to all of you guys for being here. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Senator Calvo. Senator Telatig, will you recognize it this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Have a day to Guam Memorial, who's here, and of course, Gita, welcome again. And Maria and Jerome, thank you again for sticking it out, you know, first. Just so I think a couple more bills left, or maybe just one more to go, so, one more. Well, you know, a lot of, again, good questions were asked of my colleagues. You know, unfortunately, we fall short on getting them answered. And a lot of data and information that's needed is not, not here today. But I'm looking forward to it and hope that you can provide it. I do sponsor a bill earlier, I'm actually a sponsor of one of the bills earlier on exemption of medicines. I think that's, that's really important. But I do see the issues with having all these other things in, in one bill. I mean, that's a lot of work, and of course, the manpower that's needed. And one of the biggest issues that we have is manpower in, in most agencies. A great concern, for the record, is that we cannot force these businesses to lower their cost, even if we give them that, that break, even if they're exempt, can't force them. How long will it take to implement something like this? Maria?
I'd have to check with our vendor. We're gonna need to, in addition to the programming, it's, it's really the form itself. Because as I, as you will see, specifically for GRT or BPT, the, the business, we track it by activity, not specific products, so.
Right. So what is the enforcement, Jerome? What do you look for in, as far as enforcement? I mean, there, there wouldn't be a whole lot because, you know, but just.
Yes, well, I mean, it comes back to what Senator Doinis mentioned earlier about self-reporting of the.
Right.
And so the tax enforcement side of it would be actually looking at whatever return when an exemption, and currently, you know, there, there are exemptions and there's a code when you take the exemption. But whether the business is a, a majority might be listed under retail. But, you know, it would really come down to actually auditing, you know, the business or the taxpayer to see what exemptions they're taking for, if this specific law was passed or bill was passed into law.
Would you see yourself or Revantax providing data and information on these products that retailers are actually lowering their prices? Can you provide that information? I mean, it's one to put it on the form, right, Maria? You know, and follow on your end. But it's another to see if this really goes to fruition, if you were able to do something like that to have that, you don't have the manpower again, probably.
I don't know that that would actually be.
Monitoring the cost.
Yeah, because like if, let's say, if they do lower the cost, it's really based on the total amount that they, you know, the gross receipts, right? So if they lower the cost and they sell more, we can't really tell that. Again, until, you know, an actual audit may be done on the return.
Okay, okay. Well, thank you so much for that, and thank you, everyone, for your time. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Senator Telatig. So I now ask that the sponsor of the legislation not to close on his bill.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate all the comments and testimony on this bill. I approached this bill as a skeptic despite being the author of this bill. I have long questioned the premise that a reduction in the BPT will lead to meaningful cost savings for consumers. That has always been a statement peddled when these conversations happen. And though I am a skeptic, I'm still the eternal optimist. In this situation, for food, medicine, childcare, elder care, I am willing to take this risk to see for our most important needs, our most important people, our manamku and our children, we can actually see meaningful reductions and cost savings. Because then for me, it would open up the door to maybe having more meaningful conversations about reductions of the BPT in other sectors. This is my test case, my own personal experiment, to see if there is any truth or any merit to the idea that reduction of the BPT leads to savings. Because if we cannot find savings for these things, then there is no savings in other sectors either. It would just be a tax cut for the top 10% of the island, the top richest businesses, getting more money in their pocket at the cost of lower services to the people of Guam. And so while I approach this as a skeptic, I remain hopeful that this could be an avenue to savings. And if not, then we know. Because we have no meaningful data, we have no real North Star to figure out if we do this, it will lead to savings, tax relief that hits the top businesses. We see the chamber's testimony that they don't want to do this. They don't want to prove that cutting these taxes will lead to savings. They just want you to cut all the taxes. And so if that is the position of the chamber, then no, we will not be reducing the BPT because the facts show that 90% of the small businesses of the island are being serviced by the Dave Santos exemption. So any meaningful cuts in the B P T should be recognized for what they are, tax cuts for the rich. But if it leads to savings for food, medicine, childcare, and elder care, just this once, I am willing to take a chance. So with that, Mr. Chair, I ask my colleagues to remain open-minded in this conversation, and we'll see where it goes. Thank you very much.
Sisus Massey, Senator Parkinson, so at this time, I will consider Bill seventy-one dash thirty-eight C O R having been heard, and we will now proceed to the final bill on the agenda. And once again, this is a bill, Bill number one oh one dash thirty-eight C O R, introduced by Senator Jesse Lohan. It's an act to add a new twenty-six-two-zero-three-F to Article Two, Chapter Twenty-six, Title Eleven, Guam Code annotated, relative to expanding the business privileged tax exemptions list to include prescription drugs. Senator Lohan, you recognize it this time?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good morning, colleagues, and morning, panel, and folks that will be testifying for this bill this morning as well. Sisus Massey, Mr. Chair, again, for allowing me to open up regarding this bill, one oh one dash thirty-eight. I want to begin by expressing, of course, my deep gratitude to co-sponsors, Senator Telo and, of course, yourself, Mr. Chair, for supporting Bill one oh one dash thirty-eight. This legislation is grounded in the shared belief that our people deserve better access to healthcare, and that access begins with affordability. Bill one oh one thirty-eight seeks to exempt prescription medicines from the business privilege tax, and while it may appear to be a simple adjustment to our tax code, it carries with it a powerful message that the health of our people must be a priority, not a privilege. We know the challenges our island faces, our healthcare infrastructure is under immense strain, our people are burdened by long wait times, limited specialist care, rising costs, and for many families, the only option is to fly off island to seek the care that they need, an expensive decision that not everyone can afford. The most immediate and responsible step that we can take is to lighten the cost of prescription medication right here at home. By exempting these life-saving drugs from additional taxes, we support our local pharmacies, ease the financial burden on our people, and help bring Guam one step closer to a healthcare system that actually works for everyone. This bill is about fairness, equity, and above all, it's about our people. Again, Mr. Chair, I want to thank all my colleagues for joining me in this effort, and I want to look forward to today's discussion. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sisus Massey, Senator Lohan, Lillian, and Jordan, you weren't signed up for this one, or are you going to testify on this bill as well?
Yes, and I apologize, I didn't sign up. I was kind of rushing to come in and then, but I do have a testimony against this bill.
Okay, if you can hold just for a moment, I want to bring up at least a couple more panel numbers, as we have quite a large panel for this bill. So I'm going to go ahead and get at least three additional individuals up who have signed in. Conception, Mel Carlo? Is, are you here to testify on this bill or just in support? Okay, so Arthur Mariano, looks like you have oral testimony. Please come forward. Mister Mantenonia? Please come forward. Okay, and going down the list here. Maria Poland? Is that correct? Please come forward. Oh, you're together? Okay, so we're going to go ahead and go with this panel. I'm going to allow the regulatory agencies to go, and then we'll have the others, and then we'll bring others forward as required. Director Lizama, please proceed.
Okay, like Bill seventy-one thirty-eight, we currently don't track this type of product. So we would need to have the online form and related programming amended and to be able to account for them. And therefore, based on that fact, we are unable to measure the potential fiscal impact or loss of tax revenue should this bill pass into law. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Director, so, yeah, trying to kind of get, there was a question, there was an information posed by one of our listeners who texted me directly, thinks he's familiar with the tax system. So since it was brought up, that auditing would be probably one of the closest measures with regard to the measurement of any pricing or impacts, wouldn't the B P T line item on receipts aid in that process?
I'm sorry, sir, which line?
Basic question is that, it was mentioned earlier that in order to try to ascertain volume of business, what's affected by prices, others, just the audit capabilities that was mentioned, or auditing that would be useful in trying to track that, then going back to the first bill, this person's asking a question, then doesn't it make sense then, that a line item, visible B P T, would aid in this process of what we're trying to do for these additional businesses?
Yes, but again, you know, our concern is, if you're going to use that data specifically to try to correlate it with, you know, what gets paid, you know, our concern is there may be exemptions taken, there may be other things, drawbacks, spoilage, you know, things like that, that may affect that reconciliation. So that's what we're more concerned about is.
Aren't adjustments common?
Adjustments are common, but sometimes adjustments aren't made until, you know, later. And remember that on B P T returns, you have up to three years to, you know, make such adjustments, or as I mentioned earlier, there are taxpayers who, for whatever reason, you know, don't apply for the exemption until later on. So that's where it's going to be somewhat difficult for us. Again, though, I did say that I would take the discussion back to the team, and we would try to come up with some kind of solution that may work. Well, we're hoping to come, you know, arrive at that.
Thank you, Marie.
You're welcome.
Ms. Tina from Geeta.
Good morning again, Senator Duenez and members of the committee. Again, we are in support of providing financial relief to patients for prescription drugs, but taking this direction again would expressly violate our bond, our commitments in the business privilege tax bond indenture, which states again that as long as the bonds remain outstanding, the government shall not reduce the rate of levy and collection of the pledged business privilege tax below three percent, nor shall the government reduce the services, products, or activities to which the business privilege tax applies, nor shall the government upwardly adjust any exception or exclusion, or otherwise impair the pledged business privilege tax. Again, this may be seen as a, if we pass this, it may be seen as an event of default, which will open us up to the calling of the bonds, which is currently outstanding at six hundred million. But, you know, again, we will work with the committee on finding other ways to provide such relief. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Tina. Ms. Lillian?
Good morning again, and thank you for this opportunity. And as I mentioned earlier, with in response to Bill seventy-one dash thirty-eight, we say the same thing again with regards to this Bill one oh one dash thirty-eight, we do not support it. We understand the intention, the well-meaning of it at the individual level of patients or individuals who need their prescription medications revealed. However, the big picture, the big impact on, you know, the B P T with the hospital is again, the financial sustainability and viability of the hospital. And if, you know, we don't get the funding source or it's reduced, it will really limit our ability to serve people or even perhaps close some of the services, and I don't want to do that. So that is our position at the Guam Memorial Hospital. Thank you.
Sisus Massey. Sir, could you identify yourself and please proceed?
Yes. Have a day, honorable senators, ladies and gentlemen, and everyone. I am Arthur S. Mariano, a pharmacist and a consumer. I am here to strongly support Bill one oh one dash thirty-eight. Words are not enough to emphasize the critical timing and importance of this bill, as it is also related to Bill seventy-one dash thirty-eight introduced by Senator William Parkinson's. Pharmacies throughout the world are one of the most accessible healthcare providers and are often the first health professional individual seeking care. With many pharmacies open seven days a week, with no appointments necessary, pharmacies are uniquely positioned across communities to provide useful and important healthcare and advice, especially for vulnerable populations in limited resource settings. Small businesses such as your local neighborhood pharmacy are often referred as the backbone of the economy due to their significant contribution to job creation, innovations, and economic growth. They are responsible for a substantial portion of new jobs, driving economic activity, and fostering a diverse and competitive marketplace. They often provide entry-level positions and opportunities for individuals to gain valuable work experience. Small businesses are often more agile and adaptable than large corporations, allowing them to quickly respond to market changes and customers' needs. The presence of small businesses fosters healthy competitions, leading to lower prices, better quality, and greater choice for consumers. Small businesses generate revenue for local communities, supporting businesses that serve them. Many small businesses are owned by individuals from diverse backgrounds, including women, people of color, and veterans contributing to economic diversity. They reflect the unique character of our communities, providing a sense of local identity and pride, fostering relationships between consumers, customers, and employees and business owners. It is interesting to note that there is no state sales tax on prescription drugs in all forty-nine U.S. states except the state of Illinois, which currently subjects prescription medicine to a reduced rate tax of one percent. The World Health Organization's guidelines on country pharmaceutical pricing policies highly recommends tax exemptions or tax reductions for pharmaceutical products. This is primarily because taxes can make essential medication less affordable, particularly for the poor and vulnerable. Taxes on medicines can significantly increase their price, hindering access to necessary treatments, and causing reduced adherence to medical treatment, poor health outcomes, treatment failures, increased health complication, and potentially negative impacts to public health. Tax exemptions and reductions are likely to make products more accessible and affordable over the long term, especially for patients, purchasers, and especially for patients living on a low income, such as some individuals not qualified to have Medicaid insurance. Tax exemptions and reductions may lead to a loss of government income, although the loss is likely to be small. However, direct taxes are already levied by the government on the income of individuals and corporations. Taxes present trade barriers and may hinder access and market competitions. The negative financial impacts of taxes can also affect patients more than suppliers, making medicines less affordable for them. Taxes on medicines are considered regressive. They disproportionately affect lower-income individuals as they spend a larger percentage of their income on these goods compared to those who have higher income. The World Health Organization recommends to support tax exemptions or reductions aligned with the broader goal of ensuring access to essential medicines for all, regardless of their socioeconomic status. World Health Organization suggests exploring alternative revenue sources for the government funding rather than relying heavily on medicine taxes, such as taxings on healthy products. Evidence suggests that taxes on medicines do not substantially contribute to government revenue goals, but can make medicines unaffordable for patients. Tax exemptions for pharmaceutical products are likely to have a neutral impact on the long-term sustainability of healthcare system. However, they would be likely to enhance affordability in the long term. Access to medications is crucial for managing chronic diseases and preventing severe illnesses. This enables individuals to comply with treatment plans leading to better health outcomes and reduce healthcare costs in the long run. A healthier population is more a productive population. On a gradual basis, Bill one oh one dash thirty-eight will contribute to a healthier workforce, reducing absenteeism, and increasing overall economic productivity. I therefore strongly support this bill, for it greatly benefits the people of Guam. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Sir?
Thank you, Chairman. Vice Speaker, Senator Lohan, Senator Calvo, Senator Telahe, Senator Tadegui. I know you're probably saying, what is a trial lawyer doing here in front of me as opposed to, I'm speaking on behalf of prescription drugs and business license exemption? Well, I'm here on behalf of a client and a friend who is a doctor and unable to be here. His name is Dr. David Parks, and he's asked me to be present today to read his statement, and I believe it is impactful and it's important. And if I may? Dear Senator and members of the Guam Legislature, my name is Dr. David Parks, and I am a retinal ophthalmologist with a clinic on Guam since nineteen ninety-nine. Over the past twenty-six years, there have been remarkable advances in my field that now allow us to treat slight threatening conditions such as diabetic retinopathy, retinal vascular diseases, and age-related macular degeneration with intraocular interjections of specialized medications. These medications are purchased directly by my office from pharmaceutical distributors and administered in-office. While the cost of these drugs is high, their effectiveness in preserving vision and quality of life justifies the expense. I am reimbursed by Medicare and Medicaid and private insurers for the cost of medication, typically with a small markup to cover administrative costs, including procurement, storage, and billing. However, under Guam's current five percent gross receipts tax, G R T, I am taxed on the full reimbursement amount, including the cost of the drug. In many cases, the remaining balance after taxes is less than the purchase price of the medication, resulting in a financial loss. Unlike private payers, Medicare and Medicaid do not allow fee negotiation, so I must absorb these losses as part of doing business. To date, I have continued to provide care without compromising treatment decisions. However, rising practice overhead and declining reimbursements are making this increasingly difficult. Exempting, excuse me, exempting physician-administered medications from the five percent G R T would be a critical step in ensuring that I and other physicians can continue providing state-of-the-art care to the people of Guam. Thank you for the opportunity to submit this written statement. Sincerely, David J. Parks, M.D. And one last point. My office did do some research, and I do concur with the statement made by the previous gentleman, the pharmacist. made by the previous gentleman, the pharmacist. Guam and the state of Illinois are the only two jurisdictions that do have any kind of taxation, sales tax, on medical drugs and pharmaceutical equipment. So we believe that this is one of the instances that we shouldn't be the exception. We should be with the rest of the country. It is important for our people to have access to these drugs. They should be penalized because of the rising cost. Thank you.
Sis Massey, sir. Once again, for our committee report, please identify yourself for the record.
Yes. My name is Rollin Mantenonia, and I'm speaking on behalf of David J. Parks, MD.
Sis Massey, and that was definitely a very powerful testimony. We've got work to do. I'm not sure how we're going to plow through this, but yeah, it does really seem interesting how we got ourselves in this spot to be that exception. And I think the biggest thing is the research. I know that 3% probably may be possible right off the top, depending on how we move forward with the committee, and I'm going to have another hearing, just because I think it's that important. I wanted to get this out in the public first so we can discuss it. But that was very compelling testimony, and I agree with you. I'm sure the author agrees as well and co-sponsors. So I'm going to ask my colleagues, particularly the author, for any questions of this panel, because we have quite a large panel coming up as well on the second, you know, after this panel is completed. So Senator Lohan, do you have any questions at this panel?
Actually, it's more of a statement to make because we're so worried about, of course, the violation of bond covenants at this point. And, you know, we're currently at 5%. The BPT hasn't been reduced to 4%, and what was stated before that this may affect the deliverables in healthcare. And we're at 5% already, and we're still challenged with the deliverables. So that being said, you know, it's crazy that every time we talk about cost-saving measures, especially this, these are life-saving measures. These are life-saving measures. And to say that we're saving a few dollars in medicines and that these people will take these few dollars and bank it is insane, because the same pharmacies where these people will save a few dollars will buy something else in there, will make up for the GRT that was lost that they save from being exempted. You know, it's not $1,000 loss in BPT with prescription drugs. And how many of us know of people who need medication but can't afford it? I just witnessed it yesterday where people are saying, hey, I don't have enough for medicine. Are you taking high blood pressure pills? What type are you taking? Can I have one of yours? That's not the way to take medication. It's not your medicine. It's not prescribed to you. But because somebody else is being prescribed and they have the same, again, diagnoses of high blood pressure that people would assume that they're taking the same medication, the same milligrams, and all this. These are life-saving measures. This is making affordable, more affordable for people to be able to get medicine. And again, have we seen that with the reduction that, you know, have we thought about it that, okay, so what we lose in what we're not going to make up in our or we're given exemption in prescription drugs, a few dollars were saved here, would that not be made up with the few dollars that people will spend? They're not going to bank it and call Tal or United and go to the Philippines for the $3 that they saved and spend it somewhere else. This is for our people. These are life-saving measures. Life-saving measures. We're trying to save lives, but yet, oh, I know we're scared about these bond people, man, because they might call on our bonds. We have to pay it up. Really? Well, just give them exemption and we'll see that these people will spend this money that they save. So I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, but I don't buy this at all. I mean, this is for our people. These are life-saving measures. These are making medicines more affordable for our people. And if we can't see that, and we're just too worried about people in New York, obviously, these other places, Guam and Illinois, are the only ones?
Senator, may I respond real quick?
Sure.
Although we cannot add an exemption, another way to do this is we create some form of tax abatement in which they pay into the general fund and then they get the, you know, we do compliance to ensure that the numbers are corrected, are correctly reported, and then they can apply an abatement for the following year. But, you know, again, the whole purpose here is that they pay the 3%. They pay into the general fund the 3%.
Okay. So you're not in opposition. You're just wanting another way around to do it.
Yeah, there's always another way, Senator.
Yeah, that's fine. I mean, yeah. No, no, I'm fine with that. But to actually just to say oppose it because of our bond people, of our people in New York, well, I'm worried about our people here that are sick in Guam. You know, I want to get them treated. So, I mean, New York can wait, but if we find another way around to be able to do this, that's fine. I mean, I'm good with that. I'm good with that. But to outright oppose it and not to help our people, it's just insane. And, you know, I'm going to move on with it. I'm going to put it on the floor and get it voted on, because I don't see any of our colleagues that will vote against making medicines more affordable for our people, most especially, again, the most vulnerable. I mean, not all of us have, again, have the opportunity to be able to get our medicines that are prescribed to us, let alone to be able to see our doctors, because we're not insured. But anyway, with that, I'm glad you brought that up, and we can do something like that. It's great, rather than just all-out opposing it. But thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sis Massey, Senator, and no apologies required to me, but I certainly understand your passion. Yeah, maybe a quarterly turnaround would be more effective. So lots of work to do, but that's why we're here, and our committee will remain committed to seeing what we can do. But, and Tina, thank you, because that does make sense in terms of the recordation purposes and collections. But this seems to be the spirit of the back-and-forth, right, in terms of how do we, it looks like basically tax reform almost, but I think it's due. I mean, in consideration of what we need to do and establish what's affordable and establish how we got to also do our due diligence with collections and other issues. But that's for us to figure out, but thank you for your testimony. Senator Chalahi, you have any questions for this panel?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your testimony, and all of you are here in support. Just wondering if rev and tax, in hearing the testimony from Pacific Retina, attorney was reading that on behalf of Dr. Parks, it says he's being taxed on his reimbursement on the cost of medication. I mean, do you see any way to rework that? I mean, he's saying it's resulting in a financial loss. But I guess, I don't know, maybe attorney, you can answer this. When they bill for the cost of medication to the Medicare, Medicaid, and private insurers, are they able to include the GRT?
What?
The BPT.
Senator, Dr. Parks's office manager, Ms. Marie Pollan, is here. She can answer those questions specifically.
All right.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you, committee. My name's Marie Pollan. I'm the office manager for Dr. David Parks and Pacific Retina Specialist. He's been a practicing physician here, as Attorney Montenotia said, since 1999. And yes, it's slightly different than individual consumers who purchase medications. This is medications that are provided not just by Dr. Parks, but many physicians here on island who have to purchase the medications. And then they're reported as general services from the physician. It's all, as Ms. Lozama has stated, is all reported as a service, one type of revenue. And so the price of the medication is not just taken into consideration, it's the full reimbursement. So Medicaid and Medicare provide us a set rate for which they will reimburse. They are non-negotiable. So yes, we do take a loss on some of these medications. And so if there were a way that we could have an adjustment on our taxes, you know, where we could, unlike some other things where it's basically we're just reporting at faith a number, you know, there are invoices or purchase invoices that we can say, this is what was purchased. We're not making money on this medication. This is not our intent. This is not our goal. Dr. Parks is providing medication that when he started in practice in 1999 were not even available. Patients were going blind because we couldn't provide any kind of service, and now we have medications that are injected into the eye, and we are seeing site-saving results. And so as opposed to what some may think is if you're not making money on it, then we just won't provide the service to these people. And we don't do that. We feel strongly that we must continue, and that this is the cost of doing business. And so if there was a way to answer your question is to have an adjustment on our return or a GRT reporting so that the medication portion is not taxed at 5%, that would be highly supported and appreciated.
All right. Are you able to itemize the BPT when you bill Medicare, Medicaid, or private insurers?
When we submit claims to our insurance companies, everything is line itemed, correct? And then they are written. Every item in a claim is reported with codes. J-codes typically report a drug that was used.
All right. And Director Lozama, Revenue and Tax, are you able to tell us how many of people would be affected by this bill? I mean, how many institute, I guess, entities?
We don't track, you know, we don't track it by medication or by product, so I can't give you that.
Do you know how many pharmacies are, do they, is that one of the, what you do track? Do you track pharmacies?
I'm pretty sure that we could get that information.
So that includes pharmacies plus?
Physicians, correct.
Physicians who?
Purchase.
Yeah, and dispense the medicine as part of their service.
Correct. We do not purchase these types of medications through our pharmacists. Some are, but those are usually self-administered. The ones that we provide along with other physicians in different fields, not just in ophthalmology, are purchased directly. And so, but they are reported on our part through the services.
Okay, yeah. And some of the practitioners listed here are physicians, dentists, optometrists, podiatrists, osteopaths, pharmacists, veterinarians, physicians, assistants, and advanced registered nurse practitioners. Okay. I guess, and I know you testified that we're not tracking this right now. We're not able to give an amount, but I'm trying to find out if you would know how many of these companies are in the 5% bracket versus the 3% bracket right now?
I don't have that information in front of me, but I can get back to you.
All right. Does anyone want to guess at that on the companies on Guam? Let's see the pharmacies. Yes, Dr. Mariano?
Here, don't worry. Yes.
Come forward, please.
Identify yourself again, because when we do the committee report.
I'm Arthur Mariano, a pharmacist, and there are more or less about 30 retail drugstores in Guam.
Thank you. I'd be curious to know, or I want to know from Rev and Tax if they're able to determine if we're talking about affecting those in the 5% BPT bracket or in the 3% bracket. And also, of course, the amount of the impact. Dr. Mariano pointed out that WHO, World Health Organization, has findings that reducing the taxes on medications is going to make this more accessible to patients. See, this is the premise that we are challenging in these bills. It's like we don't really have proof. I tend to trust the WHO if they have findings, but if we can flush that out, I'd appreciate that. Is we want to know whether the companies are going to pass that savings on to their patients as well. Yes?
Rest assured, Madam Senator, yes. I, as a pharmacy owner as well, if we'll have these tax reductions or tax exemptions, I will gladly implement these reduced taxes to my customers.
Sis Massey. All right. And Gita is suggesting a workaround for these. We do, you know, when we look at what we actually have tax exemptions for that have existed for many years, not many of them are as important as prescription drugs. And so I do think about that. However, yeah, when we need to, this will have impacts beyond, your consumers is going to have impacts beyond, and the services that we are providing. So we have to consider many, many things. But I do very much appreciate your testimony. And there are other testimonies, by the way, from other pharmacists as well and companies, all in All right. It's hard for us. We, the chairperson on the Committee on Finance has put a freeze on any hearings on bills where we are appropriating money because, kind of, I stated, because there are no audits to tell us whether, how secure we are going forward. And we all know there are federal cuts going forward. So for me, those factors, we just have to know kind of what we're looking at and where are we going to cut and what the amount will be, of course, when we can get that, if we can get that. Do you have any way we would be able to estimate that amount? Dr. Mariano or Attorney Montenotia?
I wouldn't have any idea.
Like, do we know the amount of prescriptions that are sold on Guam? You do?
Yes, I think we could always quantify.
Oh, there's another panel? Oh, I'm so sorry. Okay. All right. But, Dr. Mariano?
Yes, we could quantify it, and most likely for a given pharmacy establishment, I would say at least 80% or 70% of their sales comes from prescription drugs, and the rest are for the over-the-counter medications and supplies.
Okay. All right. Thank you very much. So I'm looking forward to hear as well from the next panel. So thank you all for your testimony. Very helpful. Sis Massey.
Yes, Sis Massey, Senator Chalahi, and thank you once again to this panel.
Mr. Chair, I haven't had a chance.
Oh, I'm sorry. That's right.
Please sit down. Good try. I'm still here.
Oh, I wasn't trying anything. Thank you for reminding me.
No, I know everybody, it's lunchtime. I know everybody would rather go to lunch pretty soon and same here, but thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, this, to me, the reason why I supported this legislation, I think it's a life-saving policy. And if we look at how we're going to implement this on Guam, we've got 49 states that have implemented this process. 49 states. So if we need a format or some kind of form for rev and tax to see how the other states, you know, move forward with this exemption on taxes, then we've got something to follow, the guidelines to follow it. the guidelines to follow it. I just too concerned, want to make sure that these savings are passed on to those who are most vulnerable. And there is a separation between, you know, what you sell as over-to-the-counter versus prescription drugs, and that's what we're here for, to support something like this. I mean, we really do need to get on the board as other states have. So I'm hoping that Revantax won't have too much trouble, you know, going through that. Now, as far as abatement is concerned, to bypass that 3%, you know, to meet the bond covenants that we put into place, I'm curious too, you know, as well to see what the other states are doing when it comes to their type of bond covenants, when, when the exemption of prescription drugs are not in play, you know, for Gita.
Hi, Senator. I don't have that exact information, but what we do know is only a handful of states have gross receipts tax. Most of them are sales tax, and those are visibly, you can see what they're doing.
Okay. But I agree. We can find a way to make them whole again, so that these savings can pass on to the consumer that desperately needs it. Like I say, it's a life-saving policy. I do have one question, though. I think it's a lot easier, you know, when we have pharmacies here who distribute the medication, prescription drugs to clients, but when you go to other doctors who order from your pharmacy, that also can be monitored. But how do you monitor when, and maybe the Pacific Retina can come up and sit in the hot seat right now? If you can, Dr. Mariano, or, oh, yes. No, 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 it's okay. My primo is, yes, a knight in shining armor, allowing her to sit. Okay. So when you order drugs, prescription drugs from off-island and not through a pharmacy on Guam, is there already a tax on it from the GRT? Is the GRT taxed on to that? Or how does that happen? What kind of taxes?
Not upon, not upon the purchase, Senator.
Yeah.
Only when we report it as revenue.
Okay. So you receive it and then you sell it, right? And then that's when you add on your 4%?
Right. So it's actually done as a procedure. So in our case, we're not selling directly. We don't do direct sales to our patients.
You just utilize it?
We prescribe, and that goes to the pharmacy. The medication that we are using are actually part of a procedure. So similar.
And you get that off-island? You order it through the mail?
Correct. We order it through a distributor, and then we have to pay for the shipping, we have to pay for the storage. Most of these are refrigerated medications. We have, and then we, the physician administers the medication.
What kind of taxes do you pay on that when it's ordered through the mail?
None, because Guam does not have a sales tax. And because we are purchasing through the United States, they follow the same guidelines. They follow your state or territory tax, and ours does not have. And so then we are paying that on the GRT side.
So there's really not going to be any, you know, issue or cost savings to any of your clients because you don't pay any taxes on medication that is brought in through the mail?
That is correct. And the point that it won't change our rate. Our rates are usually agreed through, because we are covered by healthcare insurance companies, and those are negotiated. But again, we don't negotiate with Medicare and Medicaid. They give us a set rate. But what it will provide is accessibility. So if we continue to see a loss on medications, currently we are taking those losses so that we can provide care to our patients. However, if it became so burdensome that we couldn't take the loss, there may be medications we couldn't provide for certain patients, which is unmanageable to us. It's never something that's been part of our practice. We provide what is needed. Dr. Parks, you know, practices in California as well. He's been treating patients here on Guam for many years because there is a need in our particular specialty. And there's other specialties that have to, that are providing advanced treatments, cancer doctors, ophthalmologists, primary care physicians. Many of these would benefit, and so we're providing access to healthcare by this.
Do you pay a use tax on any of these medications that you bring into Guam to utilize that you're?
Not that I'm aware of.
No use tax at all? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of. I'd have to go back and verify.
I think Gita just verified it for you.
Right.
No, you don't pay any use tax. Okay. So, and Mr. Mariano, can you come back up to the seat? I just have one more question for you. You know, you mentioned already to one of my colleagues that this savings will be passed on to the consumer. When, has many doctor's offices ordered from pharmaceutical companies on island, or, I'm sorry, the pharmacies on island, have they ordered from you? Because I hear sometimes in doctor's offices, okay, check Rexol, check, you know, another mega drugs, and then order that medication and bring it into their office, and then they distribute it? Is that?
Yes, on a case-to-case basis. We have some local drug distributors here in the island, but sometimes they don't complete, they don't have a complete stacks of all those that are needed by our clinics here. And it could be sometimes only available at a retail side pharmacy. That's why from time to time, we have this request for clinic use only.
Okay. Okay. Well, I'm holding, holding you to it that, you know, this cost savings and life-saving policy is going to really be implemented. We can do our part as a legislature, but it all boils down to the trust that we have in our pharmacies, that they will do the same, and to our doctor's offices, to do the same on this cost. So like I said, please, Revantax, look at what the other 49 states are doing and the other jurisdictions to provide you that guideline that you need, so you don't have to get any manpower to reinvent the wheel. It's already in place. So thank you, Mr. Chair.
Situs Massey, Senator Tydegru. So I'm going to go ahead and relieve this panel, and thank you once again for your participation, our government and private partners, and have a wonderful day. Enjoy your lunch and eat an extra biscuit for me. So next, we're going to go ahead and call up the remaining panel. I know that, I think we have Melissa Gabriel. Is that Natasha Gabriel or Natasha Hebert? And then, I'm just going to say, anyone else is going to have oral testimony, please come up and be recognized. What I really meant was Caliguan, not biscuit, but that's okay. Yeah, so the instructions are, please press the button, identify yourself, and speak close to the microphone so that we can hear you and recognize you. I'm going to start on my far left here, and introduce yourself and proceed with your testimony.
Hey, half a day. My name is Melissa Gabriel. I'm a pharmacist at Guam Rexol Drugs. And I would like to say I'm in full support of Bill 1013-38, which adds prescription drugs to the business privileged tax exemption list. This initiative has been a long time in the making. My sister and I here first testified during a public hearing for Bill 4-37, and this was September of 2023, which aimed to remove BPT from food and medicine. At the time, we emphasized the need for a dedicated carve-out specifically for prescription drugs only. Following the hearing for Bill 4-37, we assisted Senator Luhon's office with drafting Bill 220-37 by researching similar laws, like we've stated, all the states have it, and gathering definitions from the National Association of Boards of Pharmacy. I'm grateful that this term, the bill has been reintroduced as Bill 10138, and I sincerely thank Senator Jesse Luhon and Senator Telo Tydegru for bringing it to public forum. This bill will address critical need to remove tax from life-saving medications. And I know this has already been said, but I would like to reiterate that this bill will align Guam with national norms. Again, Guam remains one of the few jurisdictions still taxing prescriptions. Every U.S. state and Puerto Rico exempts prescriptions from tax. Again, except Illinois with a reduced 1% sales tax rate. This bill also aligns with international health recommendations. As we already said, the World Health Organization recommends reducing or eliminating taxes on pharmaceuticals. The WHO findings indicate such measures have minimal impact on government revenues while dramatically improving affordability and accessibility. This bill will facilitate healthcare accessibility, and this is a big one for this bill. So exempting prescription drugs from BBT will allow our local pharmacies to have the capital to expand services and approve access to specialty medications. Again, like was stated earlier with Dr. Parks, how we don't determine the reimbursement rates. So, you know, we're paying that 5% and whatever, we're getting reimbursed at, and sometimes it is below cost, and we do have to kind of make those decisions, like can we bring in medications, you know, and also operate a business? And so I'm just going forward to, so a lot of the specialty medications are refrigerated, like they said too, so a lot of them all have to be refrigerated, air-milled in. And the mail-order pharmacies will not ship them here. A lot of them won't ship them. So we already lose that accessibility from pharmacies off-island that won't send these life-saving medications because of the cold storage issues. And then we don't want to have to make those decisions to decide if we're bringing them in. Again, just moving forward with the other points, so this does also ensure fair competition for local pharmacies. Mail-order pharmacies that operate outside of Guam are, and are registered under Guam law, are not subject to BBT. So this places local pharmacies at a clear disadvantage. This bill creates a level playing field for our community providers. This bill also promotes consistency in healthcare tax policy. Local hospitals already are tax-exempt, but outpatient care, like pharmacies, are not. Outpatient care plays a vital role in our community health and deserves equitable treatment. There's broad support for this bill from healthcare workers and patients alike, including pharmacists, pharmacy techs, physicians, nurses, billers, and patients. In closing, I respectfully request your strong support for Bill 10138, which will improve access to essential medications for all Guamanians, create more equitable environment for our local healthcare providers, strengthen both our healthcare system and our local economy. Situs Massey for your time, your consideration, and your leadership in supporting this vital legislation. I'm hopeful and eager to see this bill passed into law.
Situs Massey. And I think you meant also, thank you to Senator Duñez, as I'm a co-sponsor.
Senator Duñez, sorry. Thank you, Senator Duñez.
And I was a co-sponsor in the previous legislation.
Yeah, in the previous legislation.
I know you meant that. No problem. Thank you for your testimony, and we hope to, you know, get the third is a charm on this one. Ma'am, please proceed.
Half a day. I'm Natasha Tasi Hebert. I'm the Chief Operating Officer at Mix Corporation. We have a few DBAs, and one of them is Guam Rexol Drugs. So I'm also testifying in support of this bill. My sister, so she testified about the importance, how it impacts our community healthcare, but I wanted to talk about some of the financial implications of this bill. So as we mentioned earlier, you know, it's important to recognize that pharmacies are not the ones who set the reimbursements for prescription medications. We often struggle to cover necessary operating costs, such as, you know, high professional wages, but the predetermined reimbursement rates do not account for the higher cost of storage and freight to Guam. In certain instances, you know, particularly with very high costs, specialty drugs, when our business has looked at the cost of the medication compared to the reimbursement rates, when you couple that with a 5% BBT, and by the way, we pay the 5% BBT, we are in the 11%. And we're not making tons of money. It's just that these medications are so expensive that, you know, how much money we're spending on them and how much money we're bringing in, our margin is incredibly low, but we are pushed into that 5% BBT. And many of the other pharmacies are as well. It's not that we're these high-income generating big companies, it's just what we are selling is so expensive. And what, what we are, you know, it costs us is also so expensive. So very low margin, very high costs. So let me continue. So, so due to this, you know, high cost coupled with the 5% BBT, some of these specialty drugs cost in the tens of thousands of dollars for a one-month supply. So for our small pharmacy, you know, we have to sometimes make those difficult decisions of what drugs we can bring in, because we don't have unlimited capital. And we also aren't able to continually, like as Dr. Parks said, you know, take losses, financial losses for some of these drugs. So this bill is really important for accessibility, because this allows us, yes, for self-paid patients, we can pass the savings on to those consumers, but for those ones where it's insurance set-rate reimbursements, we can have the capital to bring in these other drugs that previously we would say, you know what, as a business, we're going to, we're going to go under if we keep doing this. And so I want to, you know, I know they're gone now, but to address any concerns regarding auditing of the BPT exemption, you know, pharmacies already are subject to intense oversight and regulatory compliance. These include, you know, the Guam Board of Examinators of Pharmacy, the DEA, the Drug Enforcement Administration, weekly pharmacy benefit manager audits, the National Council for Prescription Drug Programs, the United States Pharmacopeia Standards, just to name a few. So because of all of these requirements, pharmacies already have the infrastructure, the systems, and the standard operating procedures in place to accurately report on monthly GRT filings, as well as efficiently respond to any audit requests needed by Revantax. If, you know, you ask me 24 to 48 hours, how much of our revenue is coming from copayments and coming from insurance payments for prescription drugs? Easily, we can do that, because we, we have to do that. We have the systems in place, and we have constant audits as well. So it's not something that is difficult for us to track or difficult for us to prove. And additionally, regarding the concern of the impact on government revenue, so as my sister mentioned, you know, Bill 437 in September 2023, there was a representative from Department of Revantax who stated at the time that just exempting prescription drugs alone would have minimal impact on BBT collections. So hopefully that remains true today, and so while the loss is likely to be small for the government, this bill will provide significant relief to individual pharmacies. So, and in closing, I just want to bring to the legislature's attention that across the U.S., thousands of pharmacies, local pharmacies, have closed due to reimbursement rates. This has created pharmacy deserts in many communities, areas where patients have limited or no access to medications. We must be proactive in Guam to avoid a similar outcome, especially with the rising costs of medical. And this bill is not only a very meaningful way to do so, but is something that can bring an immediate as well as lasting impact. Situs Massey.
Situs Massey, Paragulokui, and very nice testimony. We appreciate it. We appreciate your persistence as well. You've, you've been regulars at these discussions, so thank you very much. And now, ma'am, please proceed.
Good morning. Half a day, honorable senators of 38 Guam Legislature. My name is Cheryl Marimla. I'm a licensed pharmacist and pharmacy operations manager for Express Med Pharmacy, Parisville Pharmacy, Saginawat Pharmacy, and Minutes RX Pharmacy. I'm here today on behalf of our community and healthcare sector in Guam to express our full support for the Bill 10138 that would expand business privileged tax exemption list to prescription drugs. This change has the potential to profoundly improve the health and well-being of our residents by enhancing the access to essential medications and supporting our local pharmacy providers. Below are the key reasons why this bill deserves your full consideration. Improving access to prescription drug is not just important, it is essential. This exemption will allow pharmacies to reinvest those savings into expanding on drug inventory, particularly for specialty medications that treat rare and complex conditions. These drugs are often require refrigeration and rapid delivery, making shipping costs very expensive, especially in Guam's remote location. For our company, for last year alone, we spent more than $395,000 in terms, just for the shipping charges. Traditional shipping options are unsafe for this sensitive medication, forcing us to rely on premium carriers like DHL, which significantly increases costs due to cold-chain requirements. Reducing the financial burden will help ensure timely, equitable access to life-saving medications for all patients on island. Making specialty drugs available locally will also reduce the need for patient to travel off-island for treatment, lower out-of-pocket costs, and elevate pressure on public programs such as Medicaid. This is a step toward more equitable healthcare system, one where access is not dictated by geography or financial limitations. We also support the World Health Organization's recommendation to reduce or eliminate taxes on prescription, on pharmaceutical products. By adapting this practice, Guam can demonstrate leadership in public health and show that even small, remote communities such as Guam can prioritize health equity and access. Guam remains an outlier. As it was previously mentioned, 49 states, including Puerto Rico, exempt already entirely the prescription drugs, and Illinois applies only 1% tax. Adapting this policy would not only Adopting this policy would not only bring us into alignment, but also promote fairness for our residents, especially uninsured or underinsured individuals. Savings realized by pharmacies could be passed on to consumers that what all of us were are committed to do so, allowing greater medication adherence and reducing the risk of complications and/or hospitalization due to untreated chronic conditions. Currently, local pharmacies shoulder the burden of BBT, while non-resident mail-order pharmacies do not. This creates unfair playing field. Exempting prescription drugs from tax would empower local pharmacies such as to better compete and continue offer personalized, culturally competent care. Pharmacies maintain significant inventories to serve patients promptly. Unfortunately, as we have been mentioning earlier, reimbursement rates from pharmacy benefit managers are declining, compounding financial strain. Many of the prescription drugs we dispense on a daily basis are reimbursed below our acquisition cost. The BBT adds yet another challenge, one that could force pharmacy to turn away patients needing costly medications. Unlike hospitals, which enjoy tax exemption, out-care patients provide to continue to be taxed despite playing a vital role in preventive and ongoing care. This inconsistency must be addressed. We also routinely care for patients who are forced to make impossible choices between paying rent, buying groceries, or affording medications they need to survive. One elderly patient recently confided in us that she has been skipping doses of her diabetes medication, Januvia, because her fixed income simply can't afford both food and full cost of her prescription. Sadly, her story is not unique. It reflects a growing crisis across our community. Medications like Januvia are already expensive, and additional 5% from BBT only widens the gap between patients and the care they need. For someone living on the edge financially, even a small savings from a tax exemption can mean the difference between taking the medication they are prescribed or not taking it at all. Noncompliance with diabetes medication doesn't just result in poor health. It can quickly escalate to serious complication, emergency room visits, and even hospitalization due to uncontrolled blood sugar levels. By lifting this tax, we can help our most vulnerable residents to stay healthy, reduce preventable hospital stays, and ease the emotional and financial toll on families who are already struggling. Honorable senators, this is not just a policy decision. It's a decision that could spare someone's parent, grandparent, or friend from avoidable suffering. We urge you to stand with us removing this barrier to essential care. Eliminating this tax will increase patient purchasing power, allowing for increased spending on taxable goods and services. In turn, this can help offset short-term revenue loss. More importantly, improved access to medication would lead to fewer emergency room visits, hospitalization, ultimately saving government healthcare dollars. Locally independent pharmacies are the backbone of Guam's healthcare system. They are not just businesses. They are trusted community partners who know their patients by name, understand their unique needs, and provide culturally sensitive and personalized care that cannot be replicated by the large corporate chains. But make no mistakes, these pharmacies are under serious threat. Across the U.S. mainland, a lot of independent pharmacies are shutting down at alarming rate, driven out by rising operational costs, low reimbursement, and soaring prices of prescription drugs. If we don't act now, Guam could face the same devastating outcome, and our BBT would only accelerate that decline. The closure of even few independent pharmacies on island would have devastating consequences. Patient would be left with fewer options, longer wait time, lesser support. Corporate chain pharmacies might maybe fill in the gap, but they are not true substitute. Their model is built around volume, not relationships. They often lack the flexibility, and their staff turnover and centralized operation make it difficult for patients to build trust and receive consistent care. What's at stake is more of a convenience. It's the health of our people. We risk creating a future where critical medications are harder to access, where a Guamanian resident has no familiar pharmacist to turn to. Supporting this tax exemption is a step toward protecting our local pharmacies from closure and ensuring that the people of Guam continue to receive the compassionate, reliable care they deserve. We must not wait until the close signs go up and patients left scrambling to fill a prescription. Let's act now before we lose this essential community lifeline. We urge you to support the Bill 101-38 to include prescription drugs in the expanded BBT exemption list. We respectfully request that outpatient care receive appropriate tax treatment to ensure consistency and fairness across healthcare spectrum. While this exemption may result in a short-term reduction in revenue, the long-term benefits to public health, healthcare sustainability, and economic stability far outweigh the initial cost. A healthier population is more productive, self-sufficient community, and better equipped to thrive. Let us move forward together to ensure all Guamanians have access to medication and the care they need and deserve. Your support for this legislation is not just a policy decision, it's a vital step toward protecting health, dignity, and future of our people. I respectfully ask this committee to act in favor of Bill 101-38. Thank you very much.
And now I will turn to Senator Tlalhi, because Senator Luhon, you will close with any other questioning and comments. Senator Tlalhi, recognized.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and thank you for your testimony. I have to say, that's a very convincing testimony, and I've heard a lot. And so I want to thank you for all the work that you put into that, I can tell. And you make some very good points and very important ones for our community. So I am looking for a way where we can offset what loss there might be for that. Particularly, it would decrease funding to GMH, so we have to make that up. We have to do this, I think, together with the big picture that we're going to be looking at because of all the other cuts. So this would be a cut in revenue, and I hope, as you said, Tassi, that it is a minimal one. If we get the numbers from Revantax, we'll see. But I do want to thank all of you for your work. Dr. Mariano, Dr. Gabriel, right, and Tassi, and representing many pharmacies. And I see you didn't mention it, but you also have attached a petition with many signatures of people. That's very impressive as well, I can see, from the different pharmacies that you're...
Yes, we did reach out also, even for the clinics, because the clinics also is affected, like what we mentioned earlier. It's limiting us what we can bring, like the reimbursement that being set by the pharmacy benefit manager. That's where the question, like, are we going to bring it at the loss? So usually, especially for the specialty medication, our margin is only like 2% to 3% the most. So now, if you add the 5% BBT, that's already a loss, not including the shipping. Like I mentioned, last year, our company already paid $395,000 of shipping charges alone. So just imagine, but those are not even factored in our reimbursement rates.
All right, so Dr. Marimla, right? Thank you for your efforts in that regard in getting that petition signed by all these, I can see, from different pharmacies, from AMC Clinic and others. So salute you. Thank you to all of you. Very impressive testimony. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
And for questions or the closing for the author of the bill, Senator Luhon, please proceed.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. You know, your testimony is pretty grabbing because that's actually, what you just said was kind of reliving what my family went through with my mom prior to her passing in 2006. She was diagnosed with colon cancer. And her pension was not sufficient for the amount of the medications that she was required to take and likewise for providing for her healthcare. So I thank my sisters and, of course, myself that contributed to, again, to be able to sustain her medication and her healthcare. But it's pretty touching, so it's a true story, and we've lived it. So, Mr. Chairman, thank you again to everyone who participated in today's hearing, those who shared their testimony and support, those who voiced concerns, and for those who offered thoughtful insight into the policy and fiscal implications of Bill 101-38. This measure was born out of a simple but critical truth. Too many of our people are struggling to access and afford the medicines they need to live. It should not cost anyone a flight off-island or a fight with their wallet just to manage a chronic condition or to fill a life-saving prescription. We owe it to our community to find real, meaningful ways to reduce this burden. This bill is not without its challenges, and I fully recognize the financial and operational concerns raised today, particularly those related to the bond indenture and the integrity of our revenue system. Those concerns are valid and must be addressed with care and precision. But I also ask us to remember what's at stake: the health of our people, the strength of our local pharmacies, and the affordability of care for every man, woman, and child who calls Guam home. We cannot talk about improving healthcare access and then turn away from one of the clearest and most immediate tools available to us. My commitment to continue working with my colleagues, our fiscal experts, and stakeholders from both private and public sectors to find a path forward is both financially responsible and morally sound. Healthcare access and financial accountability, to not have, or to not be competing interests, they can be partners in building a stronger and healthier Guam. So once again, Mr. Chairman, I want to thank, of course, the co-sponsors, Senator Telo and Senator Duñez for standing with me, and to all who participated today. Your voice matters, and it will guide us in the next steps that we need to take. With that being said, thank you very much for your testimonies today and being present and being the last bill to be heard. But thank you very much. Thank you very much, Mr. Chair.
Senator Luhon, and I know I speak on behalf of the three of us for sure, and all of us, really, thank you for your patience. It's been a long and very exciting morning, but we appreciate your testimony. Very meaningful, and we can see why you stayed behind to make sure you got it in because I think that's going to make the difference, really, particularly for this bill going forward. So with that, this will conclude this morning's public hearing on bill numbers 59, 90, 71, and 101-38. The committee will continue to accept written testimony on these bills within five calendar days from today, which may be addressed to myself, Senator Christopher M. Duñez, as chairman of the committee, and mailed to 163 West Chalan Santapapa in Agonya. You may also send your testimonies to senator.duñez@guamlegislature.gov. This morning's public hearing is now adjourned, and I believe we're adjourning at 12:13. Salute you, and everyone, have a great afternoon. Enjoy your lunch. This hearing is now adjourned.